Good morning. The May sixth, twenty twenty one virtual meeting of the Anne Arundel County Council is now in session. This morning, we will hear from a variety of departments regarding the proposed FY twenty two budget. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Good morning, yes. Uh, Mr. Pruski.
I'm here.
Ms. Fiedler, she's not here yet. Ms. Radhian. I understand we have, uh, Ms. Radhian's legislative assistant sitting in for her today.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy, I'm sorry, yes, I'm all over the place. Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey. I see Mr. Volkey hasn't joined us yet either. Uh, Madam County Auditor, Michelle Bollaire.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have everyone present except Ms. Fiedler and Mr. Volkey, who I expect will be joining us when they can.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Uh, for those of you that don't know, uh, recently, an Anne Arundel County firefighter was diagnosed with ALS. Uh, in May, it is ALL Awareness Month. And want to talk a little bit about it, and I'd ask that everybody take a moment of silence to think of him and everyone. But ALS typically, uh, impacts people who are over forty, but it does not discriminate regardless of age, sex, race. Uh, it affects everyone, and certainly, we are continuing to fight for a cure. Uh, we pray, obviously, for anyone that, uh, is dealing with this disease, any treatment or cure that we can certainly assist with. And I just ask that we take a moment of silence to recognize not only the firefighter and family in Anne Arundel County, but anyone who has ALS. So please join me in a moment of silence and thoughtful prayeriness, uh, for anyone impacted by this. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and is necessary in light of the health risks associated with public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call and phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting and broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the Internet. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. This technology also satisfies the intent of the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to meetings, and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none. We will begin today's presentations with Central Services. All presenters, please remember to introduce yourself and to continue to identify yourself before speaking each time. For Central Services, we're going to go over operating and capital. Our presenters are Christine Romans, Kate Dawson, Nancy Noonan, and Beth Glebus. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for joining us. You have the floor, Ms. Romans.
Thank you. Sam, are you gonna start something off?
Yes, please. Uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Samantha Chirriaco, and I'm with the Budget Office, and I am the analyst for Central Services. I would like to direct your attention to page one oh nine through one twenty-three for the Office of Central Services. And Christine, go ahead.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Christine Anderson Romans. I'm the Central Services Officer. Um, I have provided to Laura a two-page document that I will be reviewing. It's just a highlights to walk you through some of the new initiatives that are included in the Central Services, uh, budget for this year. Thank you, Laura. Should all be able to see that. Great. So to get started, I will start with the General Fund. Uh, that begins on page one thirteen with the Purchasing Division. Several new initiatives are included in this year's budget. Uh, the largest of those new initiatives is to add some buyer positions. We are asking for four buyer four positions and one additional buyer one. Um, excuse me, buyer two positions, four buyer two positions and one buyer one position. I apologize. Uh, that will bring our total number of buyers to fifteen. I think that the pandemic highlighted for us that the workload is such that all the improvements in processes and procedures, um, really are, we can only take them so far. We need additional people to push through, uh, the work, uh, to support all of the county agencies that are trying to do good things, both during the pandemic and also after the pandemic is hopefully behind us. Um, we were, we went into the pandemic with a backlog of work, and it did get worse. We are struggling to keep up with just the, um, the volume of tasks. And as many of you've been on the council now know, we've, we undertook procurement reform about five years ago, and we've made lots of changes, um, in terms of technology and procedures and processes. But we, we are at the point now where we, we need additional people in order to shorten the time that it takes for procurement, once it's fully ready to go through procurement and the purchasing process to get it back to the agencies. Um, so we believe that these positions, we've got buyer teams, and the groups are broken into groups of buyer threes and buyer fours by adding some buyer twos, um, and upgrading some buyer, uh, getting additional buyer one positions through a reclass process. We think that will create these wholly contained teams that will be able to take any procurement action, big, small, whatever it is, an amendment to a contract, uh, changing the name of a vendor, whatever the task might be, and just shorten the days that it takes so that we are more responsive to the county agencies. The next initiative in the Purchasing Division is to do a disparity study so that we have a much better idea of the changes, uh, resources we might need to improve our procurement opportunities for minority-owned, women-owned, veteran-owned, um, and locally-owned businesses, as well as small businesses. Um, we have started a very basic overview study, a feasibility study, if you will, uh, in the current fiscal year. And in order to complete the disparity study and really have a good roadmap for what we can do going forward to increase our minority participation numbers, we need to complete the disparity study by a large, uh, data review, um, breaking down all of our procurements and, and the way we have been procuring them in terms of, um, local and minority businesses, um, and really understanding where we can put our best efforts and best efforts forward, and then decide what new programs we might need to put in place. So, um, that is a large initiative for us that we're excited to get started on with your support. Uh, finally, one additional position is requested in the Purchasing Division for a disadvantaged business enterprise liaison officer. This person will help us comply with the federal DBE requirements, which are different than a state MBE or local MBE requirements. Uh, we have a few state, or excuse me, few federally funded contracts that do require compliance with DBE, and we need an additional position to help focus those efforts. I'll move on to the Facilities Management Division, and that's on page one fourteen. In Facilities Management, as you know, we manage approximately two hundred and seventy-five buildings across the county. Um, in particular, we've had an increase in requests for security at the more heavily staffed buildings. Um, we have had security in places in, in many of those buildings longstanding. Um, we have a few new buildings to add, as well as we have a new security contract where we expect, um, the, the pricing to go up. So we need approximately four hundred thousand dollars in additional contractual security funds for the coming year. We are also seeing an increase in insurance premiums. This is happening market-wide across all business lines. Um, and the fiscal twenty-two budget includes about three hundred and forty thousand dollars to address just the insurance premiums. Um, another large thing that initiative that we came out of the pandemic for Central Services is realizing that we really need to be able to share contract documents, um, across all agencies and even with the public. So many of our existing contracts are multiple years old and are only available as paper copy. So by digitizing those, we make our, our, our job more transparent, our work more transparent, but we also make it easier in the future when we go to re-procure those services. Um, we don't have to retype or start over. Uh, we have the documents already available to us as a historical record if it's in digital format. It's approximately a thousand, um, documents that were, or contracts that we're talking about. So that's why it's a large fifty thousand dollar one-time request for some scanning services. Um, the next item is, it seems pretty small. You'll see it again in the Fleet, um, budget when we talk about that. But we need to convert, uh, eight direct charge vehicles into the lease rate program. They were added over years where maybe positions were added, mechanic positions were added, but a vehicle wasn't appropriated at the time. So we found a vehicle maybe on the auction lot or repurposed it. Uh, it's getting time to replace those, and rather than just continue to buy them as direct charge, we would like to have a lease rate. Um, and finally, in the Facilities Management budget is a one-time increase of five hundred thousand dollars in our repair and renovation project budget. Um, this is for things like office renovations, painting, carpet, uh, new furniture as positions are added or as tasks and responsibilities change within county agencies. In order for FMD to stay responsive, we do, um, do some of these renovation projects, and having additional funding right here in the operating budget allows us to be more responsive and more quickly to those requests. Alright, so the next page of our general handout, thanks, uh, is the Self Insurance Fund, which is on page one sixteen. As you know, the Self Insurance Fund is the, uh, the county's insurance program for many different, um, workers' compensation, general liability, and some other types of claims. Um, we were able to do a review recently, um, of our outstanding claims, and we discovered that we had reserves sitting on the books that were not needed. Um, and through that review, we were able to add six million dollars back to the General Fund, is unneeded reserves. That also highlighted for us that the ongoing need is for an Assistant Claims Manager to stay up on that so that we don't in the future have another, uh, large chunk of reserve sitting off to the side that are unneeded. So we are requesting, uh, one additional claims assistant manager, uh, excuse me, one additional assistant manager who will function as the overseer of all the claims, um, coming into risk management. On page one seventeen starts the Fleet Administration with the Garage Operating Fund. Um, we have a couple of exciting initiatives happening here. Uh, the first one is we would like to create a VOTAC Apprentice Program in Council in conjunction with the schools. We have a very similar program in the Facilities Management Division, and it works great. We love having high school students get real-world, real-work opportunities. We've been able to hire some of those folks into FMD, and we'd like to have the same program in the Fleet Program. We have a couple of just general, uh, needs, uh, some additional portable heavy-duty lifts, as well as, um, additional funding in the Uniform Budget, and we expect gas and diesel costs to increase, um, in the coming year. So you'll see some additional funding requested there. And then finally, on page one eighteen, the Garage Replacement Fund. This is where we budget funds for the eventual replacement of all county vehicles. Uh, this year, there's a ten million dollar appropriation to replace a hundred and eighty-eight vehicles. Um, additional funds this year were requested, uh, and are included in the budget to replace total loss vehicles. Total loss vehicles are exactly what it sounds like. Somebody hits a vehicle, and we have to replace it before its scheduled replacement, um, which might be due to age, it might be due to maintenance, or it might be due to mileage. Uh, when we have to replace those vehicles early, that puts a, a big pressure on the future-year budget because then we can't replace the vehicle that has met those three criteria. We have to take the funds and replace the vehicle that was totaled. So this year's budget includes, um, additional funding for the replacement of those one-time, uh, replacement of the one-time or the total loss vehicles, and that totals about one point eight million dollars. Um, and then, as I mentioned in the Facilities Budget, we had this anomaly of eight direct charge vehicles we'd like to convert into the lease rate program, and the rest of the funding to do that is here, uh, in the Garage Replacement Fund. So that is a summary of the operating budget initiatives, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Romans. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Ms. Romans, I'm wondering if you can give me a little bit more detail on the cost breakdown for converting those vehicles to the lease rate program? I mean, what is, what is that total dollar specifically for those eight vehicles?
So in the, uh, Christine Anderson Romans Office of Central Services. So in the Facilities Budget, it is, um, fifty-five thousand dollars approximately for those vehicles, and that is just the portion that the agency pays into the fund. Um, then the actual Vehicle Replacement Fund catch-up amount is, um, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and that's how it's broken between the two accounts.
Thank you.
Anyone else with an operating question? Uh, Mr. Volkey, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Good morning, Ms. Romans. Hope you're doing well.
Good morning.
So I had a question for you on the presentation that you sent over that, uh, I always appreciate the budget highlight sheets you all put together. So on the first page, it talks about bringing security contracts up to date with new pricing. Um, I may have missed this part of your presentation if you covered it, and I apologize if I did, but I just wanted to understand what is included in the security contracts? Is that the Arundel Center? Is it the new, um, Commerce Park situation with the security upfront? I had asked some questions to the sheriff about that yesterday, and he indicated that he'd heard there was gonna be a contract for security. You and I have emailed about that a bit because I've heard of that from the Register's Office. So I just want to understand what that includes and sort of how long that security is gonna go because I know that's a major concern that the Register of Wills Office has about security at the front of their facility. Um, so if you can touch on that at all, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely happy to answer those questions. Again, Christine Anderson Romans Office of Central Services. So the security amount budgeted here is for security at all county facilities. That includes the Arundel Center, Heritage Complex, Harriet S. Truman, and a few other locations, senior centers, things like that. The budget for fiscal twenty-two and Central Services does include an amount for security at Commerce Park. Um, when we took the lease for that building, we purposely designed that building that each suite would be wholly contained on their own, and there would be no centralized security like the type you see at the Arundel Center or the Heritage Complex, that each suite would decide through access control who could get into their suite. Um, so that, that in fact is security. You know, the doors are locked unless you have an access control badge or unless someone permits you as access. The exception to that was the Registered Wills and Orphans Court Suite because we recognize that today, they are living in the courthouse, and they enjoy the security protection offered by the sheriffs that the sheriffs provides for the entire courthouse. Uh, because the Register of Wills and the Orphans Court will be leaving the court building and will be going to a, a general county building, at least for general county purposes. Um, the intent was that we would not be providing security at all. However, we recognize that with this transition period of going from sheriffs to county and the fact that they live under a state budget process, uh, that there was gonna need to be a transition time. Um, this was agreed to. We understand that there is a process to get additional funding for the, from the state. Um, I intended to reach out to state contacts to make sure that they were aware that in the future, this was needed. We had identified, um, the county could continue funding potentially for two budget cycles. Obviously, that's not, um, not, not really my decision long-term, um, but we do have funding in the fiscal twenty-two budget to continue security, at least get security started at the Commerce Park location. Um, yes, that will be contracted security. Uh, the security guards at Commerce Park will operate. Uh, the intent is bag screening, magnetometer, um, as well as be available to respond, uh, initially to any concerns. Um, the sheriffs have also said, look, if you call nine-one-one, we're gonna be the first responders. We'll, we'll come upstairs. We'll run up, uh, no problem. So we feel like the security program we've put in place will work quite well for the first year or two years, and then we are hoping that in the future years, the state budget would include an amount to take this over.
Madam Chair.
I'll come back to you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, Ms. Romans, the, I wanted to talk for a minute about the, the buyers, the extra buyers. I'm looking, and it looks to me like on page one hundred and twenty of our budget book, you're getting a total, or you're asking for a total of an additional six, uh, positions in the classified service, and then one that you mentioned in the Self Insurance, um, fund, so seven in total, I suppose. When I look at the breakdown of that, uh, it looks like you're moving three positions that were buyer's assistants, and you're, you're getting four buyer ones and four buyer twos. And I, I understand that you're saying you guys have a backlog. We did pass that, the Charter Amendment, and then the, the voters voted to raise that simplified acquisition threshold. So it was my understanding that that was going to alleviate quite a bit of, um, the work that you all had to do. And so I'm wondering if you can help me understand, really, how those two are working in conjunction because I'm a little surprised that we need this many more buyers, um, at this point. That's all.
Fair question. Uh, Christine Anderson Romans, Central Services Officer. Uh, so that's an excellent question. We are not requesting buyer threes or buyer fours. Um, those are the, um, more skilled professional level of buyers. The buyer two level and buyer ones, our, sort of the folks that would help move along, can help get quotes, um, can help agencies by reviewing their, their procurements up to that hundred thousand dollar mark and ensure that there's compliance with terms and conditions and insurance requirements, um, that the affidavits are filled out correctly. So our intent there was correct. We do not want it, we didn't want to grow the procurement, um, buying teams if we've also taken some of the work away from them. But by the agencies doing some of that work, there still has to go through purchasing. It still does get reviewed by the Purchasing Division. Hopefully, it's a quick checkoff, but we also recognize that some of the agencies are probably better skilled at this. They may have people with more experience in procurement and then in the past, and then others. Um, but once a, once a, a procurement like this, the front-end work is, is eliminated. There is still a review and check and balance process that happens in purchasing. Um, and then it does still have to go to the Budget Office and the Finance Office and the Law Office and a few other places to make sure that everything is checked and eyes dotted and t's crossed. So that's why we're not looking to hire the highest-level professional buyer. We're looking to hire that more entry-level, mid-level. Um, and I think that that is well-suited to complying with that new program, allowing the agencies to just get quotes rather than do formal solicitations, uh, and keep the work going.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, so Ms. Romans, going back to the question, I was just, I was gonna ask you a follow-up about that security question. So I'm sorry to sort of jump topics, but we gotta bounce back and forth. Um, so with the security that you're going to be providing over at the Commerce Park location, is that the only new security location that you're adding? Everything else in the county, you, you're just redoing the contracts?
Um, Christine Anderson Romans, yes, with a limitation. Uh, Arundel Center currently has security, and in the past, when the building was open, we had one security guard that was providing a check-in process. We are expanding that program because the capital project is now complete, um, and we will be offering bag screening and magnetometer, uh, screening, um, at the front door when, when the building reopens to the public. So it's not a new location, but it is a slight expansion. Um, we have always provided, before, uh, this contract, we provided security at the senior centers, and that remains unchanged. I will check with my staff to make sure there isn't an additional new location that I'm not aware of. I don't see anybody saying you forgot something, so, yeah, nothing else. Okay? So that's the only new location, um, brand-new, never been there before, would be Commerce Park.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Volkey, do you still have a question? I wasn't sure with your hand.
I do. I, I took it down, and I'm putting it back up. I'm trying to sort of do like what I would do with a flag. Um, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So again, just, just following into that same line of questioning. What's the increased cost for the Commerce Drive location? I'm just trying to think about that from future budgets and what the carryover cost will be if for some reason the state budget can't pick it up because I think that that's gonna be a major point of contention, uh, between Central Services and the Register of Wills Office going forward, and the Orphans Court as well, if we don't find that there's funding from somewhere else. That's gonna be something they're back looking for after the original two years.
I, Christine Anderson Romans, Central Services. I can appreciate that. I mean, I don't think any of us intend to just, no matter what, walk away. Good luck, dear. It is still a county building. Um, I can't commit, though, to any future or additional funding for that purpose. Um, it is included in the fiscal twenty-two budget. Um, and I would think that, you know, by working with the state, we, we should be successful in continuing a security program. We, we are aware that registers of wills, uh, across the county, or across the state, live in other buildings. And so it's quite possible that the state is quite used to funding some measure of security in other locations and wouldn't be surprised by a request here from Anne Arundel County. Um, I don't have the specific breakdown in front of me, though, for just that location, so I'll be happy to get that back to you.
Christine, if, if I may, I have it, um, readily available. It's about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Bless you, Sam. Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Sorry, Sam Chirriaco from the Budget Office. Sorry.
Thank you, Sam. Um, Mr. Volkey, do you have a, a couple more questions? So we'll move on to the next department.
I, I do have more questions, if I may, Madam Chair.
To a point. Go ahead.
Thanks. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So Ms. Romans, um, again, staying on that facility, but moving away from the security piece of it. Uh, I note on the real estate page of your budget, one fifteen, it indicates that the contractual service is an increase in rent costs. Is that attributable to the new Commerce Park location? I know that we had had some of that money in last year's budget, so I'm just trying to understand what that is in there. Or is that county-wide?
Excuse me while I look that up, just one second. Okay, so, um, Christine Anderson Romans, uh, Central Services Officer. Um, that is basically, uh, almost entirely, it's the full year of Commerce Park. Um, we had thought we had a, a, some of the funding might start in fiscal twenty-one, so you're seeing the full year of Commerce Park now in the fiscal twenty-two budget. Um, the rest of the increases are sort of normal escalations in some of the rent, other additional locations that we pay rent. So you might see like a three percent or whatever in some of the other, other, um, lease locations.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we can move on to capital.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Christine Anderson Romans Office of Central Services. Laura also has a summary of our capital budget. There it is. Thank you, Laura. Um, I will go through these, not in order of importance, but in order of the pages in your book, just for ease of following along. Um, some of the program and projects are bigger than others. So starting at the top of the page, C four thirty-seven, um, zero, 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 Underground Storage Tank Replacement. That's on page two A, two B. The only change here, I mean, this is a project just to replace underground storage tanks, uh, and the only change here is to add the out-year funding. Uh, the next program is forty-four thirty-five Facility Renovation and Relocations on page four. Um, as you can see, um, we've had a pretty stable amount of funding in this project, approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, the facility needs, as you might imagine, are quite large. Um, requests alone in fiscal twenty-two totaled two million dollars. Um, so we were very happy to see that the Budget Office felt and the county executive, um, felt that there's some additional funding could be provided in the out-years of this program to really help us tackle some of the longstanding requests. Um, it's not only furniture and, uh, moving, but space planning to make sure that we're using space appropriately, um, and that as agencies grow and need more space, that we, um, plan it out correctly and well and in terms of workflow and work needs, um, but that also if an agency is moving and how to backfill their space or certainly as telework has taken off, we are looking more and more at how should we be renovating our spaces to have it make a little bit, be a little bit more functional for everyone that remains. Uh, we do have a, um, a, a draft list, I would call it, a representative project list that has been provided in the budget book to give you a sense for some of the projects that we're looking to do based on agency requests starting in July. The next capital project is fifty-three seventy-eight. This is the larger colony facility and system upgrade. Um, if facility renovation and relocation is the fun fancy stuff, paint colors and carpet, this is the behind-the-walls infrastructure nobody likes to think about until it breaks. Uh, these are roofs, HVACs, boilers. Um, we have undertaken a major initiative in the past few years to really upgrade these biz, buildings, not only to get them into a less, um, maintenance-heavy posture, where we're not constantly replay, we're replacing or responding to breakdowns, but also where we can to implement some energy savings features. Um, so the additional funding, um, it's two point nine million dollars in fiscal twenty-two, bringing the total program to ten million dollars. And then the increases you see in the out-years to just grow this program slightly really will help us tackle a lot of those sorts of initiatives. Um, we are, you know, HVAC systems are increasingly expensive and can only be done in certain times of year. You don't wanna take the air conditioning offline in summer, so we need a lot of planning time to make sure we're designing these, um, as these, uh, these projects appropriately, and so we work very closely with DPW on that. So that, those are the increases you see there. And just like with forty-four thirty-five, we have included a list of representative projects for C fifty-three seventy-eight in the packet as well. The next project is on page fifteen. Um, fifty-seven seventeen is parking garage repair and renovation. As you know, we own the Whitmore Parking Garage and the Glen Burnie Parking Garage up in Glen Burnie. We have discovered some structural issues with both of those garages that, um, can be repaired. Um, and so we are working on both garages at the same time, and you'll see an increase in funding. Uh, we work very closely with DPW to ensure that we have designed these, um, and engineered these repli, or these refurbishment projects, and the additional funding is in response to the scopes for some of the work that is ongoing currently. And the additional funding is in response to the scopes for some of the work that is ongoing currently. Project fifty-seven eighteen on page sixteen is to renovate the Millersville Garage. Just as a reminder, the county has three garages. One at the seventy-four oh nine being able to work property, one in Davidsonville, and then the, the main administrative headquarters of. The Fleet Administration is here in Millersville. That garage is over forty years old and is in need of a rehab. It's used two shifts a day, five days a week. So the intent is that. Once a fire maintenance facility is built and the fire shop can move out, then the Millersville Garage would be renovated, hopefully in the fiscal twenty-five timeframe. There's no current funding, current year funding requested for this one. As I just mentioned, the fire equipment maintenance facility, we, that is fifty-seven nineteen and that's on the next page, page seventeen. That is slated for hopefully construction in fiscal twenty-three. We are working with DPW and the County Real Estate Division under Central Services to find the correct property for that. Once that facility is up and running, we will be able to be much more responsive. To fire maintenance, fire equipment maintenance needs. As some of you may know, we, some of the stuff is so large, it doesn't fit in the current garage, needs to be worked on outside. So just simple things like that and providing more crew space, locker rooms, that sort of thing is really important to us. So we do need to get the fire shop into a more modern facility. Alright, and then project C fifty-eight zero one is a renovation of the Truman Parkway bathrooms. And that is on page twenty-two of your books. Actually, I'm coming to you with a decrease in funding. The DPW engineers went through and based on the current pricing they've seen in some of the other projects. They expect that the total cost of this project would actually be reduced. So that's what that is showing there. And the final project is a new initiative, fifty-eight twenty-eight. Electric vehicle charging stations and other green technologies, that is on page twenty-five. That was an announcement that was made over the summer and supported by this council. With a bill that was recently passed, this funding in fiscal twenty-two is to really help us feasibility study, figure out what the next step should be. In terms of what kinds of vehicles to buy, what kinds of tools and training. The fleet staff need as well as county staff. Where to place charging infrastructure around the county. Policies such as personnel policy surrounding that. So we need to get the ground, get the initiative lifted off the ground and we do need some assistance, some technical assistance. And this funding will start that and I expect future years will have future funding amounts included. That's the end of my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Romans. Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Romans. I have a question in light of a recent column op ed. Editorial, I'm sorry, in the Capital Gazette and some longstanding interest among some of my colleagues to get back in chambers. I know Chambers has been under renovation for some time, it's not in this fiscal budget. But obviously eager to open up doors for at least council members at first and get public back in there. What, what is the timeline? What are we looking at? I, I would hope it would be a priority since it's been under construction for a while.
Yes, it is a priority, Christine Anderson Romans, Central Services. So thank you for the question. I know you were eager to get back home, we were eager to get the, the room kind of put back together. We've encountered numerous delays, some of which were related to the lobby project adjacent to it. The current issue right now is that the dais, we're redoing the, the facing of it and we've redone where you all sit. And that project just fell behind due to some issues with the contractors, some of the supplies and materials they were getting. Just it, the look of it wasn't quite right, so we've had to go back and kind of start again. However, the good news is, is that we expect that the dais itself to be complete by the end of next week. So we're very hopeful that all the punch list and little things that though, that piece of it will be done. However, part of the project is also to upgrade all the technology in that room. As we know, we were operating in kind of some nineteen eighties technology. So that is a longer term piece. And in addition to do that, we've got a new lectern and new staff tables that'll be down on the floor at the dais. And that has been ordered, that furniture won't be in until mid-June, we think. Hopefully earlier, and then the technology has to be installed to go with it. So that piece probably will push the project into July, although we don't have the timeframe from the offices of information technology on that. We are all well aware that you would like to be able to just get in the room. We would like to be able to provide that to you, so we are doing everything you can to expedite it.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. I had a different question, but I'm actually gonna follow up on that question and answer right there, Ms. Romans, if I may. So. I guess my, my struggle with this whole Chambers renovation project has been this. But for this thing called COVID, which has kept us from being in the chambers for a year, how would this project have been done? And allowed the council to still keep working? Like, I, I mean, I'm, I, I have to assume that there was some kind of a plan to do this renovation and it would have included the council still being able to meet. And now somehow because of COVID, it's made it easier, I would think, because we're not there. But yet it still seems to be a long, long time until we can get it done. So if you can give me any insight on that, I'd appreciate it. Cause I've asked that question to other people and I've not gotten an answer in a, any kind of a satisfactory way yet.
Thank you, Christine Anderson Romans. So to do a, a Chambers renovation, you're correct, we do need you to not be needing the room. The only window we really have for that is if it's a long month. Between your second meeting in the month and the first meeting of the next month. Or August, where we get typically five to six weeks from the end of July to the beginning of September. So we probably would have done the project, the renovations a little bit differently. We might have programmed it in smaller chunks that could have occurred in two week windows. And given that contractor very specific instruction, get this piece done and then it needs to be buttoned up as if you were never there. So that the council members can use their space for something as large as the, the seating, the tables where you all, the, the dais. That we would have held until the August recess. And we would have forced their hand to work nights, weekends, whatever, in order to get it done. I will also add the complication this time was that the work did not go well and what needed to be redone, so we didn't foresee that. And so that is disappointing. I don't even wanna think what we would have done. We've been working during an August recess and trying to get you back in the building under that. The only piece that I think is that we're taking advantage of or that is due to COVID is the technology. You know, we, this whole Zoom room idea, or you can't all be on Zoom and in the same room, the feedback is horrible. I know that the, the CIO, the Chief Information Officer is really had took this time to think about how, when the room is reused in the future. What does that need to look like? And so that project is in fact due to COVID and being done now because the room is not currently used on a regular basis. But I, I can't speak to all of those details, I wouldn't wanna state anything incorrect. But I'm sure he'd be happy to follow up with you.
Thank you, Ms. Romans, and going forward, I would ask all my colleagues to try to stay on budget topics. We can ask our other questions later, but we have a whole lot of presentations to get through today. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. I guess with that, instead of asking a more detailed question, I will just ask Ms. Romans if you could share with us. Via email, the original project's schedule, if you've got, you know, the P six or whatever, you, whatever you've got it in. Along with any change orders or liquidated damages that have been assessed. Cause I, I am curious about the budgetary impact of this project and how long overdue it is. So I'd be curious to see, I had asked originally last year for these documents. To our then Madam Secretary and, and she had indicated that the council, we don't actually have them. So if you have those documents, I would, I'd be very interested to see them. Thank you.
Sure, Christine Anderson Romans, Office of Central Services. This project was not done as a standalone, large initiative project. It was, okay, we've got a little bit of time now, what is it that we need to get done, that we could get done? If you may remember, a few years ago, we replaced the seating and then a year after that, we did the carpet. And then we had to redo those two windows because of the adjacent lobby. So then those windows were being worked on while the lobby was under construction. And so that impacted your use of the room before the dais project did. So it is not a large, we didn't sort of step back and go, let's redo the entire chambers. I assure you, if we had done that, I would have gotten rid of the furry walls. When you go in there, you're still gonna see those walls. We didn't touch those yet. We are doing this in phases. The piece that really ran behind is the dais renovation. And there's a few reasons for that that I'm happy to share offline, but then that we have had some recent. Issues with that that we are trying to complete. So that's what I will be able to provide you.
Mr. Volkey with a budget question?
Yeah, tha- thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Romans, just to confirm, the county is paying for all this work that's happening in the chambers, right?
Yes, sir, Christine Anderson.
Budget related, I just wanted to check. With respect to the Commerce Drive situation that I keep asking you questions about. So where, I didn't wanna ask it in operating, cause it, I'm never sure where these things wind up in the budget, that's why I ask you. Is, is the funding to do the renovation at that building in the capital program or the operating? I, I would assume it's in the capital because it's a capital improvement. So I just wanna understand where that falls under which of these classifications? Cause I looked in the appendix, I didn't see anything about Commerce Park in there.
Christine Anderson Romans, Office of Central Services. This actually is in the operating program because it is part of a lease, but I'm happy to answer some questions about it.
Okay. Madam Chair?
One more question, please.
So, Ms. Romans, Nathan Volkey, District Three again. So then with respect to it being in the lease. Is, I had heard some things, I've, I've mentioned this to you, so hopefully this doesn't come as a surprise. That this project is over what was originally budgeted by, I'd heard in the ballpark of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can you speak to what the cost has been of the budget? The amount that you thought you would spend, what you've actually spent, sort of what the numbers look like on that Commerce Park build out or the Commerce Drive build out, excuse me?
Absolutely, Christine Anderson Romans, Office of Central Services. So the good news is that the landlord is undertaking most of the renovations as part of, when you, when you lease a property this large from a commercial. Leasing entity, they assume a certain amount of build out and that is built into the lease costs. However, there were a handful of things that the tenants wanted that the landlord was not going to build into the lease amount. So that is not true to call it an overrun. Because it's just the part that the landlord had said, hey, we're not gonna fund that as part, part of your monthly or annual lease costs. It is a piece though that the county is going to pay for. The, kind of the two largest things were specific requests from the tenants. And when I say the tenants, there are seven tenants that are gonna be in that building, the Register of Wills and Orphans Court is one. Fire Department Administration, police body worn camera, as well as the state's attorney body worn camera, liquor board. Sheriff, sheriff field operations, and then the police section is also there. So there are seven different groups that have several different kinds of needs in terms of what the building might be used for. The two largest pieces to the, the, what the county is going to pay for outside of the lease cost. Is a generator, full building generator, as well as some design costs related to that and also bulletproof glass. The majority of the bulletproof glass and bulletproof drywall was at the request of the Register of Wills for their operational needs. So goes with, along with the security program. So we went ahead and included that in the county portion of what the county is gonna pay for in terms of the build out. The remaining funding is design cost by the architect for various changes that might have happened. We attempted to reuse furniture that was already in the building. If you remember, the previous tenants were the state judiciary and they left behind some pretty good furniture. So we tried to reuse that as much as we could. However, we weren't able to in all cases, and so we did need to include additional furniture purchase. Moving costs, all the stuff they left behind had to be packed up, stored and now brought back. So things like that, I think the normal process of renovating a fifty thousand square foot commercial building, there just is going to be some additional unforeseen costs as well. We've attempted to limit those as much as possible. We did ask all tenants to kind of finalize, they're at a hundred percent design last summer, everyone agreed to the designs. I know that you've heard from the Register of Wills with some concerns. I assure you, the changes that have been made since last September were really only those absolutely necessary for fire code. Or because the, the fire marshal or building code realized, oh, wait a minute, the inspectors realized, we, this is not legal. We, the door can't go this way, we need to change the door. So you'll see some additional costs for that. But that is the, those are the, the majority of the costs and they're not really overruns, they were amounts that would have been expected.
Thank you very much, Ms. Romans, and for the entire Central Services Department, we have so much to do. We've gotta move on, everyone can ask their follow up questions and I'm sure you'll be hearing from many of my colleagues. So thank you again for the time, for your presentation and have a great day.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we'll be bringing in our next presenters from the Department or the Office of Transportation to do operating and capital. We have Ramon Robinson and Brian Ulrich.
Madam Chair, first we are going to hear from Ms. Lori Rhodes, I believe.
Okay, you flipped my script.
I'm, I'm so sorry. Ms. Rhodes, please correct me if I am wrong here, are you addressing us?
That is correct. Good morning, this is Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Good morning, Council Chair and members of the council. The message that I'm delivering to the council this morning is to inform you that. The administration made an organization change to create a current transportation planning. And Development Review Division that will be housed within the Office of Planning and Zoning. This budget change requires three staff reassignments from the Office of Transportation. And two staff from the Department of Inspections and Permits. The purpose for this organizational change is to optimize streamlining. Of the development review process by incorporating traffic review engineers. And transportation planners to work together as part of a cohesive team with the rest of the department. The current organizational structure unnecessarily fragments development review missions. Which include redundancy and traffic. Impact fee study reviews that were identified in both the Office of Transportation. As well as the Department of Inspections and Permits. If you were to design a development review process from scratch, you would never design what we currently have. Because it is illogical. The evolution of our process through multiple administration changes resulted in multiple pieces. Being pulled out of the Office of Planning and Zoning over the years. And that makes sense when each decision is viewed in isolation. But the outcome of the collection of individual changes over two decades is a process that impedes itself. It's inefficient and unfair to those who are going through the process. We are consolidating it into a fair and reasonable and predictable process that will also create better outcomes. The Office, the Office of Transportation will continue to be responsible. For all long range transportation planning such as travel forecasting. System and program planning and all transit relating planning and services. The reassignment of two engineers from the Department of Inspections and Permits. Which primary roles for transportation mitigation. Scoping and traffic impact fee study review will not impact the mission of the Department of Inspections and Permits. The administration believes that this change will enhance the development review process. Within the Office of Planning and Zoning to make it more efficient. And it places skill sets in the right place. Where the regulatory development review approval rests with the planning and zoning officer. If I can answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have a question at this moment? Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilman Pruski, District Four, thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Again, I'm going back in history here, cause my colleagues, it's their first term, but wasn't this change the prior county executive? When they flipped with planning and zoning other things, so I just wanna make that clear when the change occurred. And I think it was, it would have been now four years ago. When it happened, so I, I, let's, I just wanna make sure that history is clearier. With the questioning, cause I'm thinking about it and, and when that occurred. So if you could just clarify that, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Pruski, Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Yes, that reorganizational change occurred in twenty sixteen, where the fragmenting of the departments start happening. They reassigned the engineers from the Office of Planning and Zoning to the Department of Inspections and Permits. In twenty seventeen, they created an Office of Transportation, which primary function was to be long range planning. But that department began doing traffic impact study reviews. There are a lot of delays because we're meeting internally, we're kind of like battling each other internally over the interpretation of the code. And so we wanna develop standard operating procedures and processes that are standardized and uniform. We also did research and looked at other jurisdictions and they pretty much run the one stop shop development review process. So we felt it was best to not have these fragmented processes within the development review section.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Ms. Rhodes, then as we have planning and zoning come up to give their presentation and transportation come up. I, I would understand then from what you're saying that three positions will be gone from the budget from transportation, but will be in the planning and zoning. Or I'm just trying to figure out if the budget reflects what you just said, or if this is a change that came after the budget was finalized such that. It's not reflected in the budget.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Hare. Lori Rhodes Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. The changes should be reflected in the budget. And just wanted to, to make sure I answered that before you looked at it and saw those changes to say why we did it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. I appreciate the explanation. Uh, doesn't look like my colleagues have any other questions right now, and I think we'll. Then actually get into transportation. So thank you for giving us that explanation.
Thank you. Enjoy your day, everyone.
You too. Good morning, Mr. Robinson. And Mr. Ulrich, good morning. I don't know who's taking the lead, but whoever it is, go ahead.
So I believe that um, our Budget Officer, Darlene. We'll, we'll start off first. I don't see Darlene on here, but I think Darlene was just kind of going to go an overview. So we have both um, capital and operating. And our, our capital actually goes into with our highway projects. So what we'll do is we'll just touch on some of the capital projects, but then as far as giving a over, a whole overview of the capital project or the transportation expansion projects. We'll do that on the eleventh, kind of save some time as it relates to um, capital. So today, we will just focus primarily on our operating budget. Um, the changes in the operating budget, I think you just received kind of an overview from uh, Lori Rhodes in regards to. Um, some of the operational changes that will happen between the Office of Transportation, Department of Inspections and Permits and the Office of Planning. So I see Darlene now, so hi Darlene. Yes, Darlene will go over the overview and then we will be here to answer any of the questions that you may have.
Great. Good morning, Darlene Flynn with the Budget Office.
Oh, you just muted yourself.
Not sure how I did that. Sorry about that. I'm Darlene Flynn with the Budget Office. Um, the Office of Transportation's budget starts on page one sixty seven in the operating budget book. Um, we're going to start basically overview page one sixty eight, which is the comparative statement of expenditures. So if you look at the top part of that, the budget change from FY twenty one to FY twenty two is a little over six million dollars. For a recommended budget of fifteen point one million dollars. And the majority of that, as you can see, is in grant fund uh, changes um, of. About, it's a seven point five million dollar cares, FTA cares funding grant. Uh, which the majority of that is being appropriated in FY um, twenty two. So that's why you see the change. Um, in the grant fund. And I believe Ramon was going to go over some of the specifics.
Thanks Darlene. So, um, just to kind of add on to what Darlene has stated, so going through the operational budget for the Office of Transportation. Which you will see is an increase in grants and contributions line item. And that does come as a result of the cares funding that was provided to the county. So for, for some who might not remember, the county has been going through a transitional process of establishing more transit services. As it relates to being the county providing the services. Um, by doing that, that actually allowed us to um, be able to draw when we had the last round of. Um, monies that came from the federal government or federal transit administration. Um, based on the amount of services that we operated, based on the size of the county, we were able to um. Establish ourselves as a transit providing agency. And so that allowed us to be able to be a part of the cares fund. So that's why that line item actually changes. And it is, it was a seven point five million dollar um. Give to the county. And so what it is, is it breaks it up over the course of time. So I think we have until twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Um, and the goal there is, you know, as we did move in Arundel, a major component of moving in Arundel was to move. Uh, the Transportation Development Plan. So within that Transportation Development Plan, there's a significant amount of increase, um, particularly as it relates to providing more service frequency amongst our existing service routes. And also providing different types of service throughout the county, you know, with flexible services, which are kind of the fixed route hybrid services. And then demand response services and zonal services. So what this will allow us to be able to do is to. Um, expand our service portfolio as it relates to transit services around the county. This also will help us as it relates to um, providing more amenities. So these amenities are not just. Transit shelters and benches at certain stops, but also upgrading our technology that we have. Um, having technology that will allow us to be more, to have to give the passenger more of a reliable sense of services that they're going to be using. And things of that nature. So that, that from an operational standpoint is really the highlight. Of our operational budget. The other one is just that there's going to be kind of a transformational thing taking place as it relates to the Development Review Process. Uh, and, and kind of going to a, a centralized location for that. And so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey District Three. Mr. Robinson, good morning. Um. I so, I, I just wanted to understand because you have the largest departmental. Increase in the county at sixty seven point one two percent between your funding from FY twenty one to FY twenty two. And I know that you're indicating that almost six million dollars of, which is pretty much the whole increase is the cares funding that you're talking about. Do you anticipate that with the increased services that you're providing today? As a result of this cares funding, that when the cares funding is no longer available or is entirely used, that you'll have to stop providing those services? Or do you anticipate that the county will need to find a way through a general fund money to now start? To pay for these same services to keep them. What's the expectation in terms of service level? Has the cares funding simply come in and helped us get to a place you were expecting us to go? Or was this sort of extra money and you said, well, for a period we'll do this, but then we're going to back off of this. I'm just trying to understand. Um, what the long term implications of this are.
So this is Ramon Robinson with the Office of Transportation. Thank you, Councilman Volkey. I think that's a great question. I think there's kind of a, a balance there. So one of the good things is that the way the county operates services, you know, we, we were previously doing it as a purchase service provider. The cost of service was relatively higher than what we can do it in, as ourselves in the county. So I think that there's a kind of a, a, it's, it's not kind of a one stop shop. It is kind of a balanced approach that's taking place here. So we've got this funding that's coming in as it relates to the cares funding that will be able to add services, but it's leveraging what we get from the general fund. So as the general fund changes, you know, the services of the complement of services that are there, hopefully we'll be able to kind of measure it out. Remember, this also puts us in a position where, you know, these services or funds, they're also coming from the state. So. It, it's not, it's not just a kind of a, a one tone approach. I think the thing is to kind of do it in a measurable way. So that in the end, you know, it, it all kind of complements itself. Now, there are going to be changes, right? That, I mean, that's, that's just relative. Inflation happens, things happen, but. The overall goal here is just like we stated in moving in Arundel is, you know, as things change, we want to make sure that, you know. As Arundel County is becoming the best place, we want to make sure we've got these transportation services to complement. I mean, that. And it's clearly, you know, it's, it's showing itself as transportation services kind of going along with the central regional Maryland Transit Plan. These are. Services that are going to be critical lifeline services that are needed.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Volkey, do you have another question?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey District Three. Mr. Robinson, thanks for that explanation. I appreciate that. Um, to follow up on that. So what I think I'm hearing you say is that it's likely. These services in some form or fashion will continue. You may look for other funding sources. There may be the general fund, but it sounds like the intention is to kind of continue moving in this direction. So we shouldn't anticipate in the future a major drop off in the funding. I guess my, my follow up to that understanding is, can you tell us exactly what the new services are? That are being provided with that additional six million dollars of cares money right now. Uh, that you would be expecting to continue. What are sort of the specifics? And if you need to get back to me on that, I understand. Uh, but I just, I, I would like to know that information.
Yep. Um, Ramon Robinson, Office of Transportation, great question. So I, I can get back to you and give you the details. A lot of them are, they're, they're coming directly from moving in Arundel, the transit sections, as we broke it out in each individual county, council, man, district. But one of the things that I will tell you is that one of the issues that we have in Arundel County is not so much the service area. It's the service span and frequency. So a lot of what we're going to be adding is more frequency so that, you know, it is more usable service, right? It's, it's hard to kind of have yourself situated when you're depending on service that operates every hour and a half. So if we want the service to be useful, then we have to have more service frequency. So there's service frequency that's associated with the existing services that we have now. We're also taking a non-traditional approach to provide services, services that are coming out of Riviera Beach that are more zonal type. Or more uh, flexible services type. So we've actually established that in Brooklyn Park. We started a new service there even during COVID during Brooklyn Park, which is a. It's a flexible service that allows you, it has a route to it, but it allows you to deviate. And so we're starting to see that that actually works pretty well. Um, we have a service like that also set up in the Crawford area that associates itself with Odenton. We're seeing that that works pretty well. And then, of course, we have our zonal service that operates in South County, which we're seeing some, some pretty significant improvements. Uh, with that. So, so the thought is, we're going to be looking at making sure that we're covering the county. And then we're also going to be making sure that we have the resources to provide the frequency, because that provides passengers a level of security. And safety and comfort of being able to use the service and know that it's going to be available to them. And these are services that are more local complement and they should feed into what's happening on the regional side. But right now, we just want to make sure that we're filling all of those gaps. But yes, we can definitely sit and we can talk and we can go through it. We'll just rehash. Uh, what we've done pri- prior to. Uh, and I, I make that open invitation to each one of the county council. First, county council members that would like to do that. Of course, you guys know I like to talk about that. So. Um, anytime you're willing and ready to talk about that, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Um, unless anyone has any other questions about the operating side of tra- of transportation. Um, then we will move on to inspections and permits. Ms. Pickard.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard D two. Just real quick for, for clarification sake. The, the cares dollars that are included in your um, operating budget. Are specifically related to COVID transportation issues. Um, that's my understanding and how we've been delivering service around the county. Um, while they may inform decisions about transportation zones going forward and efforts. I don't, is it the intention to then? A- a- after this budget year and that six million dollars is expended, that we're going to see six million in general fund added to the bottom line of your budget?
Um, Ramon Robinson with the Office of Transportation. No, I, again, like I communicated to Councilmember Volkey. So the thought is that, you know, the cares funding is funding for the allotment of services, not just so much on the side of. You know, what happened during the COVID events, but you know, that also related to. Some agencies having to add more services to meet some of the provisions that were associated. So that means you're having to add more service. So just, just to kind of backtrack, we have gone through um, a series of improvements as it relates to transit in the county. So one of those improvements is the fact that we're now operating these services in-house, which that hadn't been something that we had been doing before. So at the cost compliment that we're able to operate them in-house. We're, we're able to kind of, you know, keep a steady go, but also add in services that are associated with the plans that we've. That we have approved or that have gone through um, the county council. And then, you know, not have it to be so much pressure on. The general fund, but the general fund is still going to be a significant part of that. But then that also allows us to be able to go out and look for additional funds. Um, by way of the federal government and by way of the state. So it's, it's not that, okay, at the, at the end of the cares funding that we're just going to ask for six million dollars. That's not the idea that that, that will happen. But what will happen is that there's going to be a change and a shift. And I can't tell you that there's not going to be, you know, a change in the increase. There's an increase just in overall general adding of services, but. It won't be like a six million dollar ask at one time. No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Ulrich. Um, Ms. Flynn, I'm sure you're staying for other departments, so. Uh, thank you for taking the time to uh, explain your budget today. We'll see you again on the capital side on the eleventh.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. And with that, we're moving on to inspections and permits. Greg Africa, Katie Barker. Mr. Africa, however you'd like to start, please go ahead.
Yes, uh, good morning, um. Chairman Lacy and, and county council members. My name is Greg Africa, Director of Inspections and Permits. I'd like to uh, direct you to page one ninety one of the budget book, which starts the uh, the discussion on, on the department. I would like to uh, have a very brief uh, discuss, discussion on where we, we are right now. Well, the department, as you know, does plan review, permit processing. We do inspections, we uh, attend to all customer complaints or of unauthorized or authorized. And, and development. Uh, we issue licenses, we inspect private stormwater facilities. And we enforce the, the forestry state and local laws. Uh, of, these are uh, con- con- contribute to over two hundred fifteen thousand. Um, permits, inspections, violations and complaints every year. So on an hour, on an hourly basis, we have a hundred and four of these, at least a hundred and four. Uh, permits, inspections, violations and complaints that we handle. In FY twenty one, the, the major highlight is COVID. We operated under the limiting and restricting conditions of COVID. However. Uh, we uh, continue to deliver our customer service by adapting to the times. We have placed a drop box for plans outside. Uh, conducted virtual inspections. That's, that's new and first time done in the county. We have expanded our third party inspector certifications for building and trade inspections. That's the first time for the county. We expedited tent permits for restaurants. Um, we increased our sediment erosion control, forestry enforcement. We adopted the late, latest uh, international building codes. And we issued over twenty uh, blue notices, which are, are our official communications to the building industry. To maintain the, the communications with them and what major um, policies or procedural changes. Uh, are being made. All this within um, the same number. Of uh, permits that have been accepted as in FY twenty. So it hasn't slowed down. So for next year, our major goals is, is to complete and roll out the first phase of the land use nav- navigator. Uh, we'll have continued enforcement for forestry and sediment erosion control. And it's going to be the, the first time we're going to uh, monitor. And enforce the new stormwater warranty law. So this is what's going on in um, inspections and permits. I'd like to turn it over now to Darlene Flynn for the details and the question.
Good morning, Darlene Flynn. Uh, if I could direct you to page one ninety two of the budget book. Which is the comparative statement of expenditures. We can go over some of the highlights and changes there. Um, in terms of the recommended budget for FY twenty two. Uh, with all funds, it's sixteen point five million dollars, which is an increase of about three hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred over. Um, FY twenty one. And the majority of that, um, as you'll see is, is in personnel. So if we go now further down the page to the object level breakout, you'll see the personnel services has an increase of two hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that was a lot of shifting of positions. Um, there are three new positions for the stormwater warranty law. We are also um, upgrading a few positions and we're shifting out uh, two positions to the Office of Planning and Zoning. So that, the pay package increases is where you see that um, two hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred. Um, additionally in there, when I said shifting, we did move three positions or two FTEs out of the um. Reforestation fund and back to the general fund. Two of those positions were charged at fifty percent. So. There were a lot of movement of positions, but it is basically an increase of one, which you'll see in the next page. Um, the other changes there uh, that are larger, the business and travel, which is new training, certification costs. And then under capital outlay, the fifty five thousand, eight hundred is two new vehicles. And that's with the additional uh, positions for the stormwater unit. And then um, the additional funding for grants or under grants contribution and other of sixty thousand dollars. Is basically an increase in the grants for the reforestation program. So. You'll see the increase as we get through that bureau too and that program. So Greg, did you have anything you want to add?
Yes, um, on page one ninety three. On the left side are bullets which uh further explains what Dar- Darlene Flynn uh just uh expressed. I, I'd just like to emphasize that the three new positions um focuses a lot on off-site. Possible effects of sediment and erosion um and flooding issues outside the permitted area. Our mandate as IMP really focuses on the permitted area of the development. We're expanding to look at the possible. Uh, negative effects of the development off-site into other pe- other uh property owners. So that's uh in, in effort to uh ensure that the development does not have adverse effects to surrounding property owners. And uh the three positions that were shifted from the reforestation fund to the general fund. The history of that was when uh money was tight, I think in the two thousand nine era. Um, the traditionally funded, traditionally generally, general funded positions were moved to the reforestation fund. So we're now moving it back to the general fund. The, the outcome of that is we're gonna have more plants on the ground. And more mitigation efforts as we move, move these positions back where it's supposed to be. And as uh Lori uh Rhodes and Darlene Flynn indicated, two of our traffic engineers will, will move to the office of planning and zoning. And it's reflected in this budget.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Africa, I'm hoping you can talk to me for just a second about this uh chief of electrical inspections. I noticed that you're asking in here for a, for a new position there, chief of electrical inspections. But then I look at the performance measures and roughly, it, it looks like they're staying steady from the last year. And it's actually about a ten percent decrease from two thousand and nineteen. Um, so I'm wondering if you can talk to us a little bit about what need you see for this position?
Well, historically, the, we had uh this position. I'm talking about administrations long ago. And as part of the budget cuts, it had been eliminated. So what is happening that there is a loss of. Um, proper supervision and guidance provided to the inspectors. Um, and this is also part of my succession planning to ensure that the, the knowledge is transferred properly. To uh the new breed of inspectors. And we, we can't, it's difficult for an inspector to be inspecting at the same time trying to ensure the high quality of inspections. And the certifications that are needed. Uh, to wit, for example, I asked for more training and certification monies because this position. Did not, was not um in existence to provide that kind of guidance and training to existing staff. That last year, we had virtually zero certification and training. So having this chief position will provide that continuous and, and constant guidance. To, to ensure the quality of our inspections and the skill level, the skill set level of our inspectors, which we, we don't have right now.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I ask one follow-up?
I, I'm gonna call Mr. Volkey and I'll come back to you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Africa, thank you for your presentation and being here with us this morning. Um, I am not entirely clear on the positions. Because when I go to pages one ninety-six to one ninety-seven of our budget book. It looks like there's actually an increase of four positions in inspections and permits. But then, when I go to page one ninety-three of the budget book, it looks like that there's only an increase of one position. So I'm not clear, wha- what's the variance there? What's the difference in?
Well. Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Greg Africa, inspections and permits. If I would direct your attention to page one ninety-nine. Um, you will see in the reforestation fund, details, there's a variance of negative three. So you're four minus three equals one.
Understood. Got it. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Feeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feeler, District Five. This is a follow-up to Mr. Volkey's question. Um, where are the three? Inspectors related to the stormwater warranty law? I don't, they don't just pop out to me on the pages. If you could point to them.
That, that can be found, uh Greg Africa, inspections and permits, that could be found in page one ninety-six. We have environmental control inspectors. That's actually two inspectors, not, not three.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the uh Greg, Greg Africa, again, uh inspections and permits. Ms. Feeler, maybe the, the third count. Uh, really is a senior engineer. Not, they're not all, they're not three inspectors, but one senior engineer and two inspectors.
Hey, can I ask a follow-up question then?
Yes.
Uh, yes, because I think that was kind of confusing. So do they, do, do they work as like a team or how does that, do the two inspectors work under the? And I just, I'm trying to, to understand how the three new positions work together. Maybe they're independent of one another.
We, uh Greg Africa, inspections and permits. The additional three positions that we have uh asked for. Will, will be assimilated into the existing organization. We're not creating a silo. Because everyone works hand in hand. Basically, it's, uh, we, we'd like to call it a stormwater management strike team. So when, when there's an, an, an issue or an emergent issue. Is that we allocate or reallocate these three uh positions. Um, into the effort. To solve the problem.
Okay, Amanda Feeler, District Five. So they are not solely going to work on the stormwater warranty law. They're just added to those areas because of the stormwater warranty law. Got it.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Africa, just to follow up on the conversation beforehand with um the chief of electrical inspectors. And I see here that essentially you're looking to do the same thing with the chief of plumbing inspectors. Um, and my understanding from what you just described is that those folks would not be actually performing inspections, but overseeing. The electrical and the plumbing inspectors. But then I also see here in the budget that you have. Um, electrical inspection supervisors and plumbing inspection supervisors. And I'm trying to figure out. How many, how many layers? And, and the reason I ask is that. Uh, anecdotally, obviously, we hear that it is difficult to get inspections at this point. And I'm trying to figure out. At, how many layers we have and how, how quickly we're actually getting inspections performed and whether. Adding those layers is the most appropriate positions to be looking at.
Greg Africa, inspections and permits. Um, maybe I didn't express myself clearly. They, they're not just going to be sitting at the office and not doing inspections. The way, the way I envision it is, uh, we have basically two major types of inspections. If you're going to call. Uh, look at plumbing. Uh, with a mirror image and, and electrical. We have commercial type, commercial and industrial type of inspections. And then you have residential type of inspections. And um, the commercial and industrial inspections are a lot, lot, lot more complex than residential. So what, what, what I am envisioning is the, the supervisor. Will uh take care of the residential type of inspections while the chief. On top of the overall management of commercial and residential. Will focus on the commercial side that, that needs the attention of the chief. So it's, it's um, it's like a division. Within the plumbing section where you have the supervisor focusing on, on the residential side. And the chief focusing on the entire group. In general, but specifically on the commercial and industrial inspections, which is a lot complicated.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Africa, for being with us today. Um. I worked with the administration on that stormwater warranty bill, so. Uh, and I also, uh, my staff and I have been dealing with many community issues regarding. Stormwater and erosion control onsite, offsite, left of center, right of center. It's been, it's been quite a year. So I'm excited to see these positions. I'm excited to see, you know, the best practices put into work. At the beginning of projects and then, so hopefully we can mitigate. Uh, the incidents that happen with heavy rains on the outset. I think uh my constituents and many of my neighborhoods that are dealing with water, water everywhere that we've been talking about for a few years are going to. Uh, reap the benefits of these new positions. So thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right law. Mr. Africa, when you noted on page one ninety-one that there had been uh the new stormwater management warranty law. I think you're referring to Bill sixty-seven twenty. I just, is that correct?
I don't know this, uh Greg Africa. I don't know this specific number right now, but. It, it, it deals with the two, two-year warranty on stormwater management facilities. Yes.
That, that, that's the one I'm referencing. And so I guess the reason that I'm asking this question is. I just went back to look at the fiscal note on that bill when we passed it, right? And at that point, it, the budget office indicated that there was not anticipated to have a fiscal impact with that legislation when we passed it. But now it looks like the fiscal impact is actually these three new positions that are the stormwater strike team. Which is increasing your personnel costs in your budget by, I don't know, two hundred thousand dollars, something like that. So I'm just trying to understand what the actual cost of this legislation was because this is always my problem with these fiscal notes when. You know, there's never any analysis of what it's actually gonna cost. So if you can tell me exactly what that law and the implementation of that law is costing. Inspections and permits, I'd appreciate it.
Greg Africa, in- inspections and permits. Mr. Volkey, you're, you're correct that uh the tasks of these three. Would involve not only the stormwater, the enforcement with a stormwater management bill, but, but. More importantly, the stormwater man- stormwater management strike team. Um, when the fiscal note, as, as I recall, and uh probably um. Ms. Flynn could assist in this, this uh answer. When the fiscal note was put together for uh that bill. Um, I believe the, the, the response to that was. On the, on the fiscal effects of, of the current fiscal year and not future fiscal years. Um, am I saying that right, Ms. Flynn? Would you know?
I would have to go back and check, to be honest with you. I don't know the top of my head.
Mr. Trumbauer? Surprise. Hello. Thank you for joining us.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I, I just wanted to step second clarify. The three positions for the stormwater strike team, that is something that the county, that was a county executive initiative that he came up with. And wanted to include in the budget after the budget town halls and after speaking with community members. So that is, is, there is some relation to the previously mentioned legislation, but it's not a direct result of the previous legislation. So I, I just wanted to clarify, there seemed to be some confusion. These are not directly, a direct fiscal result of the bill that the council passed.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Trumber, could you elaborate on how you envision the strike team working then? I mean, if they're under inspections and permits. Um, I am, I'm trying to envision a, a strike team to me would go offer. Solutions and try and remedy a problem, but inspections and permits on my end is doing more review type of. Uh, actions and citing for violations. So are you envisioning this team to be citing for violations? Or for trying to e- engineer solutions?
Um, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Uh, thank you, Councilman Hare. I, I don't think as budget officer, I'm the best qualified to answer that question. My suggestion would be that you follow up directly with um Mr. Africa and also Matt Johnston. Who is our environmental director and we're closely with IMP on this. Unfortunately, Mr. Johnston is not in the office this week. Um, but I'm sure he'd be more than happy to speak with you at length um next week uh when he returns.
Thank you. I will do that.
Greg Africa, inspections and permits. I, I can uh respond to that, uh, Ms. Hare. Uh, the, this concept of a strong stormwater management strike team is to come up with solutions. And um. As a matter of fact, we're not waiting for July first to do this. We are already in a transition period where I've started to reallocate some of my folks. To come up with solutions and not wait for, for FY uh twenty-two for this. So it's actually also a joint um. A joint collaboration with some of the talent from, from Public Works. Who would come up with us uh for solutions to off, to, to mitigate off-site effects of development.
Ms. Coffey?
Hi, this is Brianna Coffey, uh standing in for at least about there for District Six. Uh, I just wanted to, and I may have missed it. Um, as the question of, you know, what the current vacancies look like, what the timeline of filling those looks like.
Greg Africa, inspections and permits. Currently, we have um. Nineteen vacancies and five of those were purposely put on hold because we. It's part of the, the budget package to be reclassed. Um, and we have actually been down since a couple of months ago. From, from twenty-five vacancies now down to nineteen vacancies. So we're in the process of filling it. Um, ma- this, the filling of vacancies also present opportunities for promotions. So um, once a vacancy is filled, does it automatically reduce that nineteen? It may have a domino effect and create a new vacancies, but we're still constantly working on that.
Okay, thank you.
We, we, we have uh one last point. We have actually um. Eight certification lists that we have received from uh Office of Personnel. And we're moving forward to the interview process on those.
Great, thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I, I do, I have a question, but I have a point of order that I wanna understand. Um, when a council member is not here, are their aides permitted to jump in and act for them? I've never seen that before, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand if that's something we can do, because I, I may have to have Ms. Gannon sit in for me more often then. Um, so I just wanna understand that from a point of order.
Mr. Volkey, the answer is yes. For this purpose of getting through these budget hearings, everybody has their schedules that need to be accommodated. We're trying to do the best we can. That's why we're trying to stay on topic, move forward through the presentations, follow up on very specific questions. Um, and allow, you know, folks who have work obligations, other things um outside the budget hearings to be able to do those things. So you're welcome to ask Ms. Gannon to come sit in for you. Uh, did you have a question now?
I do, thank.
Madam, Madam Secretary, may I please make a clarification here?
Certainly.
We do not have um Ms. Schuet with us this morning. I'm afraid she is our parliamentarian. Um, this is an informal meeting. I will point out, this is not a legislative session. There's no voting happening. We're not doing any legislative business. On, on that, on those grounds, I would offer that these informal meetings, you can certainly have a proxy if you are unable to make the meeting for some. You know, good reason. I would also point out that that would not apply for our legislative sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Corby. Um, Mr. Volkey, go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So, Mr. Africa, just following up on some of the metrics that you provided on page one ninety-three. It looks like you're down significantly on building inspections, electrical combo inspections, um plumbing and mechanical. The only place that it looks like you're up are on violations um related to, actually not violations, but infrastructure and grading inspections. Um, can you just give me a sense of the workload that you're seeing in your department and why it's shifting? So much away from the building and, and other types of permits and into the grading? Um, is that a result of just who, what types of applications you're getting? Is it a result of um larger economic factors at play, if you're aware? I'm just curious if you can talk to that. Because I'm trying to get a sense of why you need more positions. If you have existing positions and you're already able to sort of shift people from one place to the other to do this strike force. So um, wanna understand that.
Well, uh Greg Africa, inspections and permits. The shift in the statistics and the increase in grading and, in inspections uh. Are, are a fact. That's, that's correct. We, we have more grading inspections that are happening right now. The, however, the skill set of the building. The, however, the skillset of the building and trade inspectors are totally different from the grading inspectors. However, what I can, what, what I can say to, to respond to the reduction of the ins- inspections is that currently, right now, the average inspection, no, I'm sorry, let, let me say this. Back in twenty nineteen, for example, when, when I took over, the average inspections was, takes only about eleven minutes. And that is
Mr. Africa, we've lost your signal. Ms. Barker? I guess we may have lost the office or something. Oh, there's Ms. Barker. Mr. Africa is still frozen. There you are. Mr. Africa, please start over. You're muted, sir.
All right, for the beginning, from the beginning, yes, there, there are more grading inspections. Um however, the skillset of the grading inspectors are different from the building and trade inspectors, which are more specialized. The reduction of the building and trade inspections from twenty nineteen uh to today and forecasted for next, for next year actually um is, is good for us because when, when I took over in FY nineteen, the average building and trade inspections only eleven minutes. So the actual time is, an inspector is on site, including his travel time, it's only eleven minutes. And that's far, far low than what we uh expect for, expect for a diligent inspection. So the actual reduced, reduction in the building inspections actually assists us in increasing our, our, our average time in, in spending an inspection on, on a building unit. I hope this answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Africa. Ms. Hare, and let's try to wrap up our questions for IMP.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. This is my last question. Mr. Africa, in talking about the strike team a few minutes ago, you mentioned an interesting um piece, which is that you're actually already working on this by um having some folks in IMP currently look at these issues and partner, it sounds like, with DPW. And, and I think the partnership across departments is a great idea. Um and so I'm, I'm wondering if it actually might be more effective to um create some sort of a system where there is that collaboration across departments as opposed to um putting a strike team under one department only. Um and if, and if you're already performing much of this, I guess the natural question is wh- what's the need for additional piece, people if you are already starting this?
Yes. Uh Greg Africa, inspections and permits. Uh thank you, Ms. Hare. That's, that's a very good question, because the way I, I look at the issues are, I, I create three bins. So imagine three bins. The first bin are those projects which have active complaints right now and are complaint driven. The second bin is a listing of projects that we think has a possibility to have offsite problems because, because of the topography, the proximity to uh property uh owners, existing property owners, and um the, the the strains that are involved um or, or any of the degraded bodies of water. Okay? And the third bin is everything else. Everything else that we have in grading permits, and we have fifteen hundred grading permits. So what I'm trying to do now is put them in these three bins and actually include a fourth bin, which is stuff that, that's from at planning and zoning that will be coming in. So when I look at this, what I'm currently addressing right now is the hot potatoes that, that we have right now, and I can count two or three of them. So that's why I can sustain it with existing staff. And talking about the system, we have already discussed the system with Public Works, and, and you can ask them the question when the time comes for Public Works, and they will acknowledge that uh Eric Michelson's team has, has already mentally um budgeted some capacity to participate in IMP's effort. And, and that's, that's how this system is being, is, is evolving. So when we go with additional folks, uh these three positions into next year, we can move from one bin to the next bin and be more proactive in the next bin instead of just be complaint driven.
Thank you. I, I know stormwater is an issue, a big issue in my district, and I know, I think in everyone's district, so I appreciate the explanation on, on being proactive. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I think this question ties into Ms. Hare's question. So when you were talking about um having inspectors go and not just focus on the site under construction with a permit, but surrounding properties. That sounds a little different than existing policy, at least in my experience. Not saying good, bad, or otherwise, but I'm just trying to understand, is there going to be moving forward a change in policy? Because my understanding with water situations in my district is that there are limitations with going beyond the property that is under an active permit. If that, if I'm making sense.
Yes, uh Greg Africa, inspections and permits. Yes, you do make sense. Um for example, we can't just enter private property downstream. So there's going to be an effort for, for outreach and public education, and we, we need that participation from um the applying property owners if they, they are interested in, in uh ensuring that there's no effect on their backyard, for example. So um we, we had the discussion, so uh at this point, it has to be participatory as far as the uh outside property owners are concerned. Uh you, 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 we can talk more uh as an example, the Ivy Hill uh project. Yes, uh I think that's what's in your mind right now. So if we have done it differently, um yes, we, I'm sorry, if we turn, turn back uh the clock, we probably would have done it differently with this council.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And with that, thank you very much. Team from IMP, Mr. Africa, Ms. Barker, thank you for making the time to join us today. Have a great day. And Ms. Corby, we will move on to planning and zoning. Mr. Kai Ziegler and Alice Christman.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
I, just a, a note of personal opinion. Um if colleagues have a follow-up question to a question, I'm just finding it to be difficult to keep up with notes in the appropriate place when follow-up questions aren't allowed. I don't know if you want to reconsider, but just wanted to make that note.
I'm not sure why I put that note, but thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm keeping track as well, so I can try and help out with this after the meeting as a follow-up.
Thank you. I just want to ensure that um everyone has time to ask their questions, and sometimes our follow-ups go on longer than our series of original questions, so. Um I know I make it look easy, but uh it's not that easy. Mr. Kai Ziegler, would you like to start off?
I would. Good morning, council members. Uh Steve Kai Ziegler, I'm the Planning and Zoning Officer. With me is Alice Christman. Alice is a relatively new employee with uh Anaronda County. She is one of our Deputy Directors, and we have assigned her the um interesting task, uh challenging task of working on budget items, but also on um personnel primarily, and helping to grow the staff in its capacity. So for our presentation today, um what I'd like to do is have Darlene Flynn with the, our Budget Analyst, go through and cover some of the highlights, the nuts and bolts of the dollars. I'll follow up with what I hope is a very short um uh presentation. I have a couple of slides and some of our accomplishments and, and really what we're asking you to fund for next year. Um and then we'll um, we'll be available for questions. And I would say if there's any questions we can't answer in this meeting, we're happy to follow up with you. So Darlene?
Thank you. Good morning. This is Darlene Flynn with the Budget Office. Um the Office of Planning and Zoning Budget starts on page one eighty-two. But if it's okay with the council, we'll go over the information on page one eighty-three, which is the comparative statement of expenditures. So in terms of FY twenty-two, we are recommending a budget of nine point uh almost eight million dollars, which is an increase of about a million dollars or eleven percent over FY twenty-one. Majority of that, of course, is in the general fund. Uh you will see a decrease in the grant fund, and that was for a grant that was expected in FY twenty-one but not received. So we'll go over that a little further down, where you'll see that under the object. So if you look further down the page and to the object level breakout, you'll see in Personnel Services, there is an increase of one point almost three million dollars over FY twenty-one. And that basically is for a net increase of eight additional positions and one reclass. So of the eight additional positions, five of those are the transfers in that were mentioned earlier from Transportation, Office of Transportation, and the Department of Inspections and Permits. The uh contractual services, you'll see a decrease of three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred. Of that, about three hundred and twenty-two thousand is that grant reduction that was mentioned earlier. Um and then there is a reduction in there also for the Glenn Burney study that was funded in uh FY twenty-one and some other small offsets. So in terms of supplies and materials, there's a sixty-three thousand five hundred increase there. Uh for the most part, that is um addition of funding for the Four Rivers area. We also have a new scanner and some supplies and materials, like curator supplies and uniforms. Under capital outlay, there is an increase of twenty-six thousand five hundred. That increase is for a new vehicle or a pool car for the department, which there isn't one now. And then to grants, contributions, and other, there is a reduction of twenty-four thousand nine hundred, and that is because of a shift up to contractual services for the um Four Rivers area, uh pardon me, for the Four Rivers area. And I believe that's it. So Steve, if you want to go over or if there's any questions?
May I make one point of clarification, Ms. Flynn? Um just wanted to talk about the capital outlay. The new pool car is for the Planning Division. There are cars assigned to zoning inspectors in our zoning enforcement section. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. What I'd like to do now, uh Ms. Corby, I believe you have a, a couple of slides you can share with the council members. And um basically, we're looking at um the FY twenty-two budget year as investment, impact, and innovation. Next slide. So um we wanted to talk a little bit about accomplishments that, that um we thought were important for FY twenty-one, and thank the council for your funding of last year that helped us achieve this. As you know, um the, the Office of Planning and Zoning developed a recommended draft general plan, and that was approved by the council, adopted on May third. Um I'd like to say we, we worked with uh Councilwoman Pickard on a Glenn Burney overlay that um we're now working on a study, and we've had several development applications come in that are working within new legislation. Office of Planning and Zoning launched a series of master plan updates, the nineteen ninety-four parole town center plan, two thousand two Greenways Master Plan, two thousand sixteen Odenton Town Center Master Plan, and the two thousand seventeen Water and Sewer Master Plan. Planning and Development produced a series of green notices, and as you know, that's our way of being transparent and communicating with um the public. It's directed towards the development community, but it's available for everyone. And those green notices dealt with virtual meeting guidelines as a result of COVID, support for calculating COVID-related time extensions, and new PDF requirements for development applications. Um the reason we're doing that is we want to be more transparent and be more responsive to citizens who are asking for information about development applications. Currently, we have to typically send out large sheets of roles of, of site development plans or subdivision to make those available through a PIA request. Uh within the Development Division, we have reduced development review time significantly. Um last fall, each of the three groups were running well behind, um and it really related to a staffing issue, which I'll, I'll, I'll uh talk about in a bit, but we were simply understaffed to keep up with the volume of development applications. To our knowledge, each of the three groups is meeting their internal objectives on timeframes. So we're pretty pleased with that. Um you know, our goal is to do our work really well and do it as fast as we can. Um all sections within the department collaborate with, with the council, individual council members on targeted amendments in Articles seventeen and eighteen. Within Cultural Resources, next slide, please. Uh we launched a Historic Interpretive Signs Program. Uh within the same group, supported nonprofits to publish a series of free booklets exploring local historic sites. Within the administration of OPZ, we initiated a data-driven program to address the public school adequate public facilities process uh in a very meaningful way. This will be a, a about an eighteen-month process that will hopefully result in legislation and implementation. The administration also responded to the pandemic by upgrading processes and technologies, some of which we just talked about, and with CARES funding resources, including an overhaul of the community meeting process to a virtual um platform. You'll probably hear that each of the departments um applied for CARES funding a bit differently. We tended to request um uh money to assist us with technology, which um meaning laptops, monitors, uh the, 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 the type of technology one could use if you are teleworking. Um we believe from an operational standpoint, we didn't, we didn't miss a beat when COVID hit. And now with CARES funding, everyone within the department is essentially set up that if we continue a meaningful form of teleworking, we can do it indefinitely. If you remember last year, on the recruitment, retention side, we had fourteen vacant positions. I'm proud to say that we have hired ten new staff. We still have seven vacancies, and the discrepancy is a bit, um it's similar to what Mr. Africa shared in his presentation. There are times when we, we have an open position, it's compet, it's competed, an internal candidate is selected, and while we fill that position, um the backfill is that we've created another vacancy. So we've made significant progress in um filling our vacant positions. We have more to go. I can um, I can give you, if you're interested, uh, uh, only if you ask, I'll give you an update on where we are at the seven positions, but we're making progress in, in the vast majority. Uh looking forward to FY twenty-two, we need to establish um um Plan Twenty Forty Implementation Action Committee, commence region planning process, and as you know, we've had uh many discussions in, in recent months on what that means with um a Stakeholder Advisory Group application, building a, a training program for new members coming in, selecting the, the Stakeholder Advisory Committees, and commencing with these region plans as fast as we can. We are very close to executing a contract to begin uh an impact fee study and fiscal impact analysis. Um scope of work's done, everything's set. We are, we are in the eleventh and a half an hour just before executing that contract. It will be a sole source contract, which makes a lot of sense for um the county and having the same consultant work on both, because much of the information in both um uh crosses um study lines. Um we're intending to update the county's two thousand two Greenways Master Plan, the ninety-four uh parole town center master plan, and, and other master plans that we've talked about. Our ongoing focus is going to be to continue on process improvement, including retention of our existing capable staff and developing a variety of different resource strategies to be as good as we can be. I'd like to touch um which is on an area which is the biggest part of our um budget request, which is obviously on personnel. Um as Ms. Flynn indicated, you do see that um our costs have gone up. We um, we are asking for three new positions, and we were provided with five existing positions. So that does tend to have a, an impact on your personnel cost. The administration has agreed to support um hiring a new senior planner in the long-range planning section. And what I would tell you is that within long-range planning, as we've had so many discussions on the general development plan, we have concluded we need five planning teams. We have three now. One is a, is a vacant senior planning position. We're in the process of recruiting. But we need five planning teams, five senior planners, and five basically planner twos. Each planning team Each planning team, we believe, can manage one region plan and one master plan. But when you add up all of the projects we have to do in order to accomplish that task in any reasonable time period, we need five planning teams. And as I said, we have three at the present time.
Mr. Mr. Kaisigler, may I interrupt just for a quick second? Laura, could you please advance to the fifth slide?
I didn't ask you to do that.
Yeah, it's okay. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Ms. Corby.
Nope. Again, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer, I appreciate that, because I think this is a very helpful slide. So in our FY twenty-two budget request, we're requesting a new senior planner. The impact or lack of funding of it means delayed GDP coordination and implementation. We're also asking for a new planner, too, within the long-range planning section for the same reason. This would create one new planning team, and it would be dedicated to GDP implementation, not necessarily working on the region plans. Keep in mind, the GDP that was just adopted has six hundred goals and objectives to accomplish. Some of those came through amendments by various council members, but we have every intention of doing implementation of this GDP. We're also asking for a new senior planner in the development section in critical areas. We do that because if we don't fund that, we expect to see decreased time for reviewing and approving applications just due to the workload, compression, and complexity of projects risking delays and plan reviews. One of the things we're finding is is over time, you can't measure workload by the number of projects. You have to measure workload by the number of projects and the complexity of the projects. And the complexity of the project is almost impossible to forecast. Much of what we work on is is building upon work that was done over the last forty years. You know, different planning and zoning officers, different interpretations, and the work gets more and more complex. So the fourth item is we're asking to convert a Planner One, an existing Planner One, to a Senior Planner within the zoning section. And again, the rationale is it will cause, if we don't do this, delayed zoning updates in the county code. This council, as you know, you're probably the most active council I've ever worked with. And as you know, you're interested and very involved, and it's a really good thing in land use legislation. And right now, typically, you're working with Lynn Miller, who is a Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. Lynn replaced Laura Rhodes' position. But with the volume of work that we're trying to do and trying to accommodate the council, it is a challenge to keep up with it all. The the next-to-last item is a document management scanning system for zoning. And that is a result that if we don't fund it, fund it, there is a a potential for a lack of compliance for document management. We have to keep copies for a hundred years, and we're trying to reduce the amount of paper that we have, because it requires space to put the paper, which requires the county to lease or buy space to put the paper. So the more we can do with technology, the better. And the last item we have here is is to purchase a vehicle. And and we have not purchased a new vehicle in quite some time. We asked for this last year, and the council wasn't able to fund it. But we lose the ability to obtain information and verify environmental impacts as it relates to development applications, because we do actually have people on staff who are qualified to do those environmental assessments. We have no vehicles available that would allow them to travel to and from sites to do that work. So I just wanted to, I guess, highlight a couple of the the key accomplishments that we believe we've been able to do in the last year and touch on some of the bigger items that we think affect our budget and ask for your support and are very open for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaisigler. Okay, everybody's going to have questions for you. Budget-related questions, please. Okay, Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilman Pruski, District Four. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Kaisigler. I appreciate it. I certainly know that the GDP process, your staff work were really, really hard. Relationship to the budget, though, I I frequently get this about the turnaround time, not for long-term planning, short-term planning, right? Again, I know you said that the timeline has been improved, but I would be curious on why are we also also asking for staff for short-term planning? And I say that because particularly around Fort Meade, you know, there's there's a lot of need for for obviously housing redevelopment and other things. And again, just for a staffing perspective, I understand the long term, because we've had council members ask about moving the regions, meeting the timeline. But again, I just want to speak moving forward. Again, I get it with the COVID, the pandemic, people out of the office. But now the people are kind of back in the game. What do we do in short term? How how quick are applications? The 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 proffer process, right? When somebody's going through that and you reply to them, you know, making sure that those things are on time and responsive, not waiting and dragging things out. So I I just want to kind of get an idea of what we're doing with with short-term planning and and should we be asking for staff also for them? Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Pruski, Steve Kaisigler. We are getting staffed up in the development sections. We have been able to meet our internal time objectives in how long it takes us to review things. What I would say is we do end up in some kind of interesting situations where there is a complaint that we won't respond to an unofficial proffer or incentive plan program. And and our perspective is, I can't design it for you. You're complaining that we don't respond, but you haven't submitted an application. So part of the complaints, what I always try and do in in working with individual council members, is need to understand the nature of the complaint. What is it that the applicant is frustrated about? And in my almost two years here, I have found very few examples where there is an error on our staff's side in in, for example, not responding at all. What we do get a fair amount of complaints is, while we are responding in time, the applicant doesn't necessarily like the response. So so and that's a different, that's a different issue. But our goal, as I said, we want to do the work really, really well, and we want to do it as fast as we humanly can. One of the issues we have in any of the development groups is when I got here, we had fourteen vacant positions. They were spread throughout the department. Within the first year I was here and last year's budget time, we still had fourteen vacant positions. And and the the it's it is quite a challenge in Anarod County to recruit and hire people. It takes a lot of time, and it's one of the reasons why I converted one of my Deputy Planning Director positions not to do planning work, but to do, I'm going to say administrative work on budget and and personnel for recruitment. We have a very, you know, with with Alice Christman here and some of the work that Christina Pampa had done in the past. We've, I think we've crossed the Rubicon in our ability to understand our kind of antiquated systems and use it as 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 best we can to hire people. If we lose people, though, and and we will, while we hired a bunch of people in the last year, we did lose some number of staff. Some of them were in the development group. If I have five people in, I'm going to say, the regional group under Courtney Wilson, and one of them leaves or two of them leaves, that's a group that's now working with sixty to eighty percent of the capacity, the need to do the work. So I, you know, our goal is to is to make sure that each of the work groups is staffed appropriately, and that's what you're seeing us ask for. I can tell you that at least since December, as far as we know, we are meeting all of our internal deadlines. For the regional team, it's and and this is non-residential projects, it's typically forty-five days. If it is, I'm going to say, critical area for a site development planner subdivision or within the residential team, it's typically closer to sixty. And our perspective is I can live with that difference in time, because with non-residential development, there is a greater impact, a positive impact on the on the tax base for the county. We're meeting those deadlines. If you have examples specific, love to sit down and talk about them. But most of you council members have come to us with individual things. And and while we understand an applicant may be frustrated, what we found is it is typically not the result of something we've done in terms of being late. It's a decision we made that they don't like. Sorry, that's a long-winded answer.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I was wondering if you could briefly touch on those seven vacancies and where you are. You mentioned you'd be happy to, so I'm going to take you up on that offer.
That's fine. So again, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Let's start from the top. We have a senior planner in long-range planning. We are actively recruiting. We have gone through interview processes. We have made an offer, and that offer has been declined. We do not have, I think, a good second to third candidate, and so we will be forced to go out and recruit again. That's the first one. Second is a GIS, and if you don't know what that means, it's Geographic Information Systems Program, program manager. This was a person in our office who resigned to take a position within DC about three or four months ago. We are recruiting. We have a closing date on that recruitment of May twenty-fourth.
May tenth, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, well, I have two dates. You're right, I do have, I have May tenth and, okay, May tenth. So we are, we are very close to being in a position to have personnel select our our interview candidates. If you didn't know, that's the way that works here. The the department doesn't select who gets interviewed. It occurs through personnel in an assessment system that they do. The third is a planning technician, again, within GIS. And we are advertising, and we have a closing date of May twenty-fourth. The fourth is a Planner One, and that is in the residential section. And we are currently recruiting. We have an advertising date with May twenty-fourth as the closing date. The fifth is a senior planner in critical area. We are in the process likely of selecting an internal candidate for that position. What that will do is will open up probably a Planner Three in a vacancy stand. The sixth is a Management Assistant Two. That was the position, our, basically, our office manager. If, and this is a little different to talk about, because there is, we are not recruiting for the position. There is a a personnel reason for that. Someone is physically sitting in that position in, and I'm I'm not at liberty to explain more on why that's happening. And the last position is a Planner One. We are not recruiting, because that's a position we are trying to convert to a senior planner. So that's the seven that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Kaisigler. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Kaisigler, I think I heard you say that with five planning teams, as you proposed, that you could complete five region plans at a time. So if...
I'm sorry, Steve Kaisigler, no, I didn't say that. Go ahead and ask your question.
Well, that probably answers my question then, because my question was, if you get these positions, can we do more than three region plans at a time?
Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. If I said that, I apologize. That is not what I meant. What if we have five planning teams? What we can do is, we have enough planning teams to do the three region plans and one master plan. That's what we can accommodate now. We need five planning teams in order to implement the GDP. Remember, we have to create an Implementation Advisory Committee, not for the GDP with six hundred goals and objectives. That is going to be an enormous amount of work for all of us to be working on. We have three region plans that we need to do. We have four master plans that we need to do. And for those of you familiar, I spoke about this a bit. The public school adequate public facilities we do is going to need a planning team to to handle the implementation of that. So one planning team for GDP, three planning teams for three region plans, and one planning team to do school APF, other state initiatives, and anything, let's, as an example, that, let's say, this council comes up with that wants to deal with something we hadn't foreseen. So we can't, we cannot do five region plans unless unless there we were funded with more positions, and it would require two more planning teams to do that. Basically, two more senior planners and two planner twos. That's what it would take beyond what we are requesting.
Okay. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Kaisigler, looking at the information, the performance metrics on page one eighty-four of the budget book, it appears that from the actual twenty nineteen to the estimated twenty twenty-one, this is in fiscal year timing. It looks like your building and grading permits are down from thirty-seven hundred to twenty-four hundred, which is, I think, somewhere around a thirty-six percent decrease. Even based on the estimate that you're looking at for FY twenty-two, they'd be down like twenty-two and a half percent. Same on the residential subdivision applications, where you're looking at going from a hundred and fifty to a hundred, which is a, you know, one-third decrease. I guess my question would be, you'd mentioned that you're having trouble reviewing the applications and sort of getting them done on done on time with existing staff. And where I think I'm confused is, it appears that your applications are significantly down in terms of what you're reviewing. So can you give me some insight on why it is that we were able to do this before, and now we can't do it anymore?
So Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer, I'm not sure I can agree to the way you portrayed any of that. What I have said is that when we were down fourteen positions, we had trouble getting the work done on time, period. We couldn't do it, and that went on for several years. We have staffed up significantly in the three development review groups. And as of December, we are basically doing the work that we're getting on time. If you talked, I'm going to say, more with Mr. Africa and what's coming in in intake and talked with our three planning administrators, two of two of whom have been here approximately thirty years and one fifteen, they will tell you that they have never been this busy before. And it's not just the number of applications, as I said before, it's the complexity of the applications. Many applications come in with modification requests. And I will say, depending on the group, the three planning administrators spend somewhere between twenty and forty percent of their time dealing with modifications. They are almost always inherently complicated and require a rigorous review to come up with a reasonable answer. So my perspective is, the numbers of applications is important, but it isn't the whole kit and caboodle. What is probably more important is the type of application. A site development plan that proposes two hundred square feet of additional floor area is different than a site development plan that includes two million square feet of warehouse space. And the complexity of those rules, of those reviews is commensurate with that.
Does anyone else have a question? Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Kaisigler, I thank you for that information about the modifications. In the nearly two years that you've been in your position with the Office of Planning and Zoning, what is the number of modifications that the Office of Planning and Zoning has granted? Because I've heard you speak about this before, about how the county previously, prior to this administration and you being in this position, granted many modifications to the tune of, I think, in excess of ninety-five percent. And at this point, I understood that you all are trying to reset that. So what is the number or the percentage of modifications that have been granted since you've been in this position in the last two years?
Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer, you you are correct that historically, we probably granted ninety-five percent of them. I cannot give you a number right now, but I'm happy to research that over the last two years. I would say that the number of applications has gone down to some degree, because one of the things we have found is the development community is recognizing the difficulty, for example, of of just a handout, a free pass on environmental modifications. So they are actually designing or redesigning their projects in such a way that they don't need them at all, or as many, or ones with the level of intensity they had asked for five years ago. So I'm happy to pull that information for you. We're actually compiling it for a different reason, but I won't be able to give you the numbers today. I would say overall, the percentage that we grant are still relatively high. They're nowhere near ninety-five percent. Some are relatively easy to to grant, like it's time extensions. We typically don't have an issue with granting a developer an extension on time. And there are some procedural things that make perfect sense to grant a very small project where the applicant asks to combine preliminary and site development plan. And we're happy to do that. We're actually working on a a greenout notice now where we would have a mechanism for a small applicant to demonstrate that they're not proposing an amount of development that requires, you know, a certain number of EDUs, a certain number of trips, so that we could grant a mod to forego the entire site development plan process. But I'll I'll have that information to you shortly.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Kaisigler, you mentioned the vacancy rate when you came in, and it was fourteen or fifteen, I think you said, and now we are at seven. So under this council administration, you, the department has never been fully staffed with the amount of positions currently allotted.
Correct.
Is it fair to say that... Is it fair to say that filling the positions currently allotted would improve your efficiency and the workload on current staff?
Steve Kuziger, Planning and Zoning Officer, yes, it's interesting. I've never had a full staff here, so it's, it would, it would feel like an amazing luxury. It would help tremendously. I think what it wouldn't do is let us do G D P implementation at the speed or rate that we need to.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for Planning and Zoning? Seeing none. Thank you all very much for joining us this morning on something not directly being the G D P bill.
Thank you.
See you, see you soon. May I have a motion to take a recess, say, for ten or fifteen minutes? I think we, since we didn't take one yesterday, and D P W is going to be a pretty intense series of presentations, it would be a good time to take a comfort break.
Allison Pickard, still moved.
Is there a second?
There, a second.
Thank you both. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Hearing none. The council will stand in recess until eleven twenty-five. Madam Secretary? When you're ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski.
Still here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
No, but I don't have time.
Ms. Rodgian.
Present.
Let me see your notes, you have two. Ms. Rodgian?
It's pink and white.
Okay, I think Ms. Rodgian was accidentally off mute for a moment there. We'll come back to Ms., Ms. Rodgian. Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Ms. Rodgian, are you with us, or?
I'm here.
Okay, thanks. We still have our county auditor with us. Madam Chair, I will point out, I believe we do have Linda Shu at our Legislative Council in attendance at this point as well.
Thank you. So we are going on to the Department of Public Works. Of course, the Director, Chris Phipps, will be our main presenter, and Ms. Karen Henry. And then, I know you folks are bringing in several separate groups, the General Fund Utilities, Solid Waste, and Watershed Protection. So you tell me whether you want everyone brought in first to run through all the presentations. I prefer we kind of do one presentation at a time and pause for questions, but you let me know what you'd like to do.
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, that's fine, we can do, and the way we've ordered it is consistent with the sequence in the budget book. So it's gonna be the General Fund. So that would be Beth and Alex would be up. And then next would be the Utility Fund. So we bring Noel up. And then Solid Waste, we bring Rhodey up, and then Watershed Fund would be Eric, we bring him up. So we just go in that order, that works for me.
It's the most logical thing to do, and you have a presentation to start out with as well?
Yes, yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for joining us this morning, and please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Chris Phipps, the Director of Public Works. And I believe Laura was gonna bring up the show. So, what, the way I've ordered this, it's organized in a way that is integrated with the budget book. So each of the pertinent slides that represents a particular fund will be shown, and then I'll show, there's some backup slides that explain or justify why we're requesting additional funding. So you'll have very specific key points. And before I start, I did wanna just recognize that I, I am assisted here, and they, they're here to throw a lifeline if I need it. Or let me sink. Karen Henry, the Assistant Director. Beth O'Connell, the, our new Deputy Director for Engineering Bureau. Alex Bakie, he's the Deputy Director for Highways. Noel Aneskevich, she's the Deputy Director for Utilities. And Rhodey Holdhouse is our Director, Deputy Director for Waste Management. And Eric Michelson, Deputy Director for Watershed Program. And before I get, and of course, our steady hand at budget, Samantha Chiriaco. And before I, I, I get into the presentation, I did wanna just take a moment to reflect on, you know, our response to COVID nineteen and the impacts it's had on the department. And, and first of all, I'd just like to extend my appreciation to all of the staff in Public Works who've been very responsive and adaptive in, in the changes and the challenges that we were confronted with. And we've learned a lot. But one of the differences with Public Works is, you know, two-thirds of our workforce is labor maintenance in the represented ranks. So that's five hundred positions out of the seven hundred and fifty. that's 500 positions out of the 750 in the entire department. They can't telework. They have to be out there 24/7, 365, delivering the water, treating the wastewater both to award-winning levels. Um, we didn't get, we don't get breaks on our NPDS permits or safe drinking water permits. They all stay intact, making 25 million curbside collections a year, maintaining four nearly 4,000 lane miles of of roads and and restoring 1,000 acres of impervious area annually. All that has to go on nonstop. And, you know, we quietly do it, uh, you know, all all hours of the day. And it couldn't be done without the um the workforce and their commitment and in in the front and challenges presented by COVID. And I really want to especially um note um what solid waste, our waste management folks had to go through because with the facilities, the recycling facilities in the landfill, having um being on the receiving end of record-setting um volumes of material. Folks were home. They were making record deliveries to the to the landfill and to the recycling centers. Um, they and they couldn't take a day off. Um, there was no A/B shifts. They had to, they had to be there to um to service the facilities, service the customers. And um, and it was difficult at first. Uh, certainly, we had queues because we had um limits, capacity limits at the at the recycling facilities. But at the end of the day, um, with it all said, I can't be happier, I can't be prouder uh in uh with the staff and the way they perform. So I did want to say that before we got too far in. So um, if we go to the next slide. This is uh right out of the budget book. So our budget starts on page 202. Um, and this is excerpted out of page 207 of the General Fund for Highways. And you'll see we're requesting an additional $2.5 million over last year. And a lot of that is obviously, uh, there's you will hear uh the the common theme, the personnel package. But one of the things too is it's this is really getting us back to where we were before the COVID. So because we had a significant, uh, we were impacted significantly with the hiring freeze. So we had an artificially suppressed budget last year. So that's part of why it looks large in this uh in this case. And then there are a couple of increased requests that that we're um having here for personnel and some capital outlay and some software. Please, next slide. And the first request is for one new traffic maintenance technician in highways. And this this position will allow us to round out our tra- our signal traffic, um, traffic signal, um, maintenance crews. We currently have two two-person crews and one one-person crew. We want, what our goal is, is to get to three two-person crews. As you can see, even in that photo, it would be difficult for one person to be out there and safely do what needs to be done. So we want to round out that third crew and make it a full two-person crew. This is um, the request is fiscal impact's $57,000. Um, and you can see the increase we've had in um traffic signals over the last 25 years. We've doubled um from 120 to 238. Next slide, please. Um, and I, we're also requesting $300,000 for a replacement of our right-of-way or access permit software. Um, this will actually be make a huge improvement. We've been, we've been uh using the current software for over two decades or around two decades. It's um, it's not very user-friendly. It's not open portal to the applicant. They can't track where their permit is at any given time. They have to call and find out. Um, this allows them to do online applications. Um, and the other uh reason is we're going to be with the with the 5G uh program that we expect to really start heating up. There's a 60, 60-day shot clock, and it's going to be real critical that we're able to return um these these permits around. Otherwise, uh, we'll be, we we take acceptance of them. Um, if the 60 days is up and we haven't um responded. So this is important to us, uh, to keep us efficient and and really brings into the 21st century, technology-wise. Next slide, please. And then finally, in highways, um, heavy equipment replacement. We took a year off last year in in restoring and replacing our heavy equipment. And currently, our our average age life of our fleet is a little over 10 and a half years. Um, our goal is to get it to eight years service life. So we're requesting an additional 980, 983,500 this year, which really gets us back to um pre-COVID times um when we have the the ability to catch up. So this is a catch-up um approach to reduce the backlog. Next slide, please. So well, let me, before we go into utilities, are there any questions on the General Fund requests?
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Uh, Mr. Phipps, just one. When you say that with that enhanced funding, you'd be back on track for that eight-year um average lifespan, does that mean then that you would no longer need the enhanced funding in future years? In in other words, this is a one-time bump up and would go back down for future year fundings?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Um, that is what our model shows as we get to about, I think it was 8.1 years. So maybe there's a slight bump up to get us to eight, but um our expectation is, and of course, unless we have a major blow up with um something that prematurely fails and needs to be replaced, but that would be the expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Phipps, thank you for your presentation. Um, I was curious because I had gotten some information about this. What is the vacancy rate? I know the hiring freeze has certainly impacted your department. Um, but I mean, one, for instance, that I know about is is because it's in my district, is Northern Roads. I mean, where are you sitting in terms of vacancies there? Um, and how do you all anticipate filling those vacancies? Because I'm certain that although those positions are budgeted, it's it's impacting the existing staff and the service they're able to provide by not having a full contingent of folks.
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Um, the vacancy list for highways, the latest one I've had.
Excuse me if you want, Chris, I can answer the question directly. This is Karen Henry, Assistant Director of Public Works. Our overall vacancy rate is at 13%. It was 14% last month, so it has gone down a little. So we're finally getting to fill some positions. Actually, in the Northern Roads specifically, I don't have that information handy, but we'd be happy to email it to you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fiedler.
Uh, Ms. Henry, can you also send that to me since Northern Roads, I'm sure other council members would be interested?
I can send it to everyone. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the chair. I'm informed by my legislative assistant that they have one vacancy. So let's see what what they have. But Northern Roads certainly did a tremendous job um over the course of this past year. So kudos to them. Does anyone else have a question at this time? Mr. Phipps, I think you can continue, please.
Thank you, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. So we're going to move on back to the presentation, and we're going to get into the Utility Fund. Um, and and a couple of, I I do want to note here that we are not requesting any um rate change um this year. We predict we forecast that we're not, we wouldn't need one next year on our usage rates. How do we do that? We do it through a mix of revenue generation and cost savings. And a couple revenue generations concepts and um that are significant to us is uh our E&amp;R plants, the Enhanced Nutrient Removal Plants. If we've performed below a certain level, which means exceptional performance, we are eligible for Bay Restoration Fund operating grants. And all of our plants are performing at that level, and because so, we get 1.14 million dollars into our budget. Um, so that that's a significant um performance measure. The other is, and I just got informed, um, yesterday's Board of Public Works meeting at the state, they awarded the county $9.485 million as part of our um uh award for the Clean Water Commerce Act. That's the state program that seeks um proposals, um grant applications um to uh compete for the Clean Water Commerce Act, which is a $10 million program. We got 9.485 million of that because we had such a competitive proposal. And and what it is is we offered up the nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment credits that we have beyond what we need to meet our permits, beyond what we needed to offer to uh solid uh uh the stormwater program last year. So the performance of our plants is yielding um excellent uh returns in this regard. And in fact, we won it, we won a similar amount last year. So we have $18 million coming to the Utility Fund over the next seven years. That's how they um formulate this. Um, the other is, you know, just cost savings. What you'll find is this year, we're once again taking advantage of the bond premium funds and using those as Pago or uh capital contributions in lieu of using Pago. So Pago can stay, the cash can stay in the operating budget. That helps to forego uh pressure on the on the rates. So you'll see, and and all that said, this year, uh, we're requesting 1.284 million less than last year's budget. Um, and uh, I I don't know what, not really much more to say other than, um, you know, we're lower than we were last year. Next slide, please. This, this is another sector of our Utility Fund. This is in Finance Administration, and we're requesting 1.186 million less than last year. And this is primarily due to a decrease in the per-rata share that the Utility Fund um contributes to the General Fund for all the indirects or services provided, law, finance, budget, purchasing, et cetera. Next slide, please. And this is just to show you the rate model that we have. We work with Budget to formulate. Um, our current rate uh for water, this is per thousand gallons, is $2.83, and we project that will hold us this year and next year. Same with our wastewater or sewer usage rates at $4.97 a thousand gallons. So um 24, and you can see in the chart, we need to stay above that orange line with our fund balance, which is two months of operating um expenditures, and that's codified. So in order so that we stay above that line, we do at right now, and and this changes annually, we do project FY '25, we would need a uh 5% rate or FY '24, a 5% rate increase. Now, experience has shown, and this isn't, I'm I'm just going to say from experience, with all the cost-saving measures and revenue revenue generators, we've, we always continue to slide this, um, you know, but we we can't ignore that if things stay as they are, we would need a rate increase in FY '24. But we're going to do our best to slide that out, um, however we can. Next slide, please. And this just shows the ranking, where we stack relative to the region, our neighbors. Um, and uh, this would be an average annual bill based on 15,000 gallons a quarter. And you see the city of Baltimore um leads the pack. And at the bottom of the the uh summary is Anaroma County. So um, I think it's, it's just demonstrates that we're staying very competitive, we're very cost-conscious, and we're always seeking um leveraging and revenue resources to lessen the burden on on rate payer. Next slide, please. Moving into uh Utility Fund. So I mean, Solid Waste, but is there any questions on the Utility Fund?
Anyone? Apologize. Oh, Ms. Hare, there's your flag. I see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I'm not sure if this is a question for the Utility Fund or not. And Ms. Henry, thank you so much because I had previously asked you about this via email. I have had some questions from constituents about automatic payment of their water bill. Um, and that really the county were were a little bit lagging in this area because so many people pay all of their bills by auto pay. And because it's billed quarterly, folks tend to forget, and then they're hit with with late charges or penalties. Um, and Ms. Henry kindly uh spoke to me about how we would need a software upgrade essentially to be able to do that. And so I guess my question is, is I I don't think it's in this year's budget, um, but what are the plans? And would it be included in next year's budget? Or do you have a timeframe where you anticipate that might be a budgetary expense? And then what what do you anticipate that budgetary expense would be? Or maybe it is in this year's budget, and that would be great, too.
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Um, so it's really a question for finance because they 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 do all the billing, and they would manage the um whatever software is used to establish billing. But one thing in the capital program, you're going to see that we do have a project. It's it, I think it was started uh last, it was introduced last year, AMI AMR, that's Automated Meter Reading and Automated Meter Infrastructure. And we're going to, we're going down that road. In fact, we've we just hired the consultant that's going to assist us in converting our, well, many of our meters already have the capacity to do automated, they're they're digital, they're constantly reading um flows. And this technology would allow us to transmit that data to a central place where bills can be generated. And ideally, where jurisdictions have set this up, they've gone to monthly billing because they can. And um, that's, that would be our goal. Um, I don't have a cost on that at this point because we're just starting the the engineering and the 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 planning for it. Um, hopefully, this time next year, we will have better information and maybe, um, you know, moving forward. The good news is many of the meters that we currently replace now, all the meters, we, when we go in and do meter replacements, they're replaced with compatible meters that can do this, that have the ability to do this technology. So um, but next year, I think we'll have a lot more to say.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? You can ask later. Go ahead, Mr. Phipps.
Okay. So moving along, now we're in the Solid Waste Fund, um, in Waste Management Services. And you'll see that we are requesting a $2.9 million increase over last year. Um, much of this is attributed to, uh, again, the the um Personal Services Package. Um, we have built-in um escalators, CPI escalators in our curbside collection contracts, which is the bulk of our, where our funding goes. And um, there's also uh some because of the the continued expansion at the Millersville Cell 9, we've got a lot of capital project activity going. We're we've got projects that have been constructed and are being constructed. So our debt service is going up, and we also had uh some increase in Pago. And the next slide, I, it actually summarizes these. Probably best to just go over that. Next slide, please. So what you'll see in the changes, the major changes, um, is 511,000 in Personal Services. And this does include paid packages and two new um labor maintenance positions, which I'll review. 735,000 associated with the CPI adjustments in our curbside collection contracts. 561,000 increase in debt service because of all the the capital activity. And then 1.1 million in Pago funding towards OIT enhancement projects. So it's solid waste um uh contribution to the IT work that's going on that assists them. And um finally, a $395,000 increase in per-rata shares to the General Fund. Next slide. So focusing on um the the two new positions, these would be two uh new maintenance workers um at a cost of $100,000 for, $100,000. Um, and the reason we need this um is our cart program, the uh recycled carts, uh that the the large wheeled carts. We started, we initiated that program 10 years ago, FY 11. They had a 10-year warranty. So that first generation of um distribution is coming of age. We're seeing increased uh broken carts, uh hinges, wheels, and new carts oftentimes are beyond repair. We have to get new carts. And what we've seen is, as you can see in the next one, next line there, in FY '20, we had 5182 requests. As of April 30th, this year, we were up to 80, almost 8,300. And what this translates into is 800 requests per month for new carts or repair orders. And um, right now, we're sitting on 274 of those that we have not been able to get to. Our service delivery goal is 10 days, and it's taking us up to two months to fully fulfill those requests. And the reason is, we do what, we basically juggle resources to um to support this program as it is. And to really be efficient, we need dedicated um resources. And that's two positions to to deliver these 800 requests a month and get this done at a level that the um citizens should expect. Next slide. And so this is um, this is a a change. We are um going to be requesting, we, in the proposal, is an increase in the solid waste fee, the annual fee. Um, and this has been predicted since 2017. In fact, the auditor's report for that budget um showed that we would have needed an increase in 2019, or we would have gone below our um our targeted fund balance. So we've seen it coming. Um, unfortunately, the time is now. And um, if we do nothing, right now, our fund balance is at 7 million. 10% of our operating reserve, um, it's it's our policy, is 6.3 million. So we're only 700, at the end, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll only be 700,000 over. So we're only seven hundred, at the end, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll only be seven hundred thousand over. If we do nothing, next year will be underfunded um the, at the end of FY twenty-two. Next slide, please. And what is it? It's, it's taking it from two hun, from two hundred ninety-eight dollars a year to three forty-one. So that's a fourteen percent increase year over year. And the landfill fee going from seventy-five dollars a ton to eighty-five dollars a ton, so that's essentially the tipping fee. That commercial um folks would pay. That's a thirteen percent increase. The, it, it's important to note, I put some context to this, but the last change we did was a decrease back in FY thirteen. Went from three fifteen to two ninety-eight. And when that two ninety-eight was established, it was expected to last three, maybe four years. We've held it for nine years. Um, and if you took that two ninety-eight that was established in two thousand, year two thousand twelve. And applied CPI inflation, it would be three forty-five today. Um, again, we, we have to set rates such that we can maintain that ten percent fund balance. Because solid waste, the program, running a program like this can be very volatile, so we need to have that um buffer in our budget. Um, and then on landfill fee, eighty-five dollars is, is proposed. The last time we set that was in two thousand ten. Again, if you do the CPI inflator, it would be ninety-two dot, ninety-two dollars in um. Today, uh so it's actually what we're proposing is a little bit below. Next slide, please. And this, this just represents our rate model for, for solid waste. So you can see what the three forty-one does. It, it, it keeps us in FY twenty-two above the target fund balance. And then what would happen is, we have historically adopted a rate stabilization approach. And what that means is, set it one time, and hopefully it will last three, four years as you burn down that fund balance. Um, and this time, because we, we do feel that, that, that's a shock. Um, we, what we're proposing now is that we adopt a more annual review. To establish whatever rate is necessary to keep us above that ten percent operating uh fund uh balance requirement. So if you project out, knowing what we know today, um it would leave, we wouldn't need a fund balance. I mean, a, a rate change in twenty-three. We have a fund balance or, or request of about five and a half in twenty-four, three, and then two and a quarter um in twenty-six. So, you know, but these are all subject to annual review. Um, and if, again, if our history shows. We can take a three to four-year um fund and let, and last nine years. I, you know, our goal is to keep pushing these out, lower them, uh whatever's necessary to maintain that ten percent um operating reserve. Next slide. And this just, this is just a histogram showing that um, that those levels of funding. Next slide. And this is a, this is another ranking. How do we compare to the, you know, in the big seven, if you will? Um, going from two ninety-eight to three forty-one, it puts us right around where Howard County is today. We're still under Prince George's and we're, we're under Montgomery. Um, the other uh jurisdictions, um there's, they use a, a blend of general funds. So it's hard to identify and isolate um what their uh unit cost is for solid waste. Next slide. And this is the same representation for um the tipping fee at the landfill. So going from seventy-five to eighty-five, um gets us slightly above um some of our neighbors, below Baltimore. Um, the other thing that's important to note with this is, it's not just um, you know, a C, a CPI uh mechanism. Really reflecting the cost of, the cost increases over time. But we don't wanna have a, such a competitively low rate that we become the, 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 the location of choice. For all the commercial haulers to bring their material. Because really what we are is a residential program. And if commercial activity is, is because we're low-priced, um starts to uh. Consume the airspace that we have at the landfill, it's gonna be at the detriment of, of our residents. Um, and it's gonna accelerate the um, the, the, the um. The rate of the uh, the, the, the loss of capacity at our, at our landfill. And really push the envelope as to where we're gonna go next. Um, so anyway, this, it's, it's important from a strategic standpoint there, too, that we not burden the residential customer. Because we're, we're too compet, too attractive to the commercial sector. And I think that's. It, yes, so before we, before we move into watershed, um, I'll take any questions on the solid waste fund.
Ms. Here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica here, District Seven. Mr. Phipps, in looking at that shocking rate increase this year. Is it possible to spread that out over two years, um FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, and still maintain that fund balance? Or is that an impossible task at this point?
I, um, that's a good question. I don't have that um immediately available.
Chris, this is Sam in Budget. I'm happy to answer that if, if that's good. We did try that approach because we thought it was shocking as well. Oh, sorry, Sam Chirico, Budget Office. We did try to spread it out between the two years, but the fund balance was not meeting the minimum requirement. Which is why we tried to stabilize it in twenty-three. We realized it's a huge shock in twenty-two. But it, it is, we are proposing that it will stay flat in twenty-three, but we tried to split it between the two years and the fund balance for twenty-two. Um, in twenty-three, we're not meeting the minimum requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. If you could get us some of those projections on what it would look like to spread it out. If we were to do some kind of a rate increase in an election year versus doing it all this year. Um, I'd appreciate that because I think that'd be helpful for us. In terms of my question, I did wanna ask, so, Mr. Phipps, you mentioned about us being too attracted to commercial haulers. Is it possible to set a different rate model where what you're taking from residential sort of pickups, uh in-county pickups? They're at a certain rate, and then you set a different rate for commercial haulers who are coming from out of county or something like that. So that we don't wind up in a situation where exactly what you're saying, we become too attractive to outside sort of haulers coming in and taking up airspace in the landfill?
Yeah, this is Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. I'm gonna defer to Rhodey uh on the specifics. But we don't, we don't accept out-of-county um commercial material. It would be in-county commercial material, so. But um, to your broader question, I'll, I'll ask Rhodey to chime in.
Sure, uh, good morning, Rhodey Holdhouse, uh DPW. Um, uh, thank, thank you for the question. Um, the uh code change that you'll see very shortly here that addresses the landfill fees is, it really has two different components. Um, the fee that we're asking to raise from seventy-five to eighty-five dollars appears twice in code. One is under commercial business, so we would be changing the fee for a commercial business. The second piece of code would change it for um uh basically vehicle-specific. So anyone delivering uh in a dump truck, stakebody truck, box truck. Um, uh, things along those lines, larger vehicles which really connote a commercial kind of use. Would also be tagged, but there, there are no other changes beyond that. Um, the way the code works for this section of the uh, the uh solid waste operation. You sort of go through a hierarchy of fees. The bottom fee is other residential trash, and it's a no-charge customer that doesn't change.
Mr. Frisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Andrew Bruski, District Four. Um, I don't know if you recall, the council passed legislation, uh, or actually I should say resolution. Uh, trying to have the state uh obviously address some of the issues to save us costs in terms of organics recycling. Again, it's a larger conversation. I still haven't got a response from the governor, but we'll certainly hope that MDE or other folks uh, you know, take a hard look at that. But I, I do wanna ask though, because this is budget-related, um what else can we do to supplement this fund? I know at times we talked about solar, and, and Mr. Holdhouse, you remember when I visited the site, there's some challenges with that. But is there anything else that we can do uh in, in terms of saving costs uh, you know, for solid waste? Um, that, that maybe we're not thinking of, or, or the council could certainly fund. Uh, we're always looking at opportunities, right? We're looking at taxpayer, everyone else. But just trying to think if there's other kind of options that uh, that could be out there to, to even further lessen costs that we're not thinking of in terms of policy. Thank you.
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Uh, you know, one of the biggest um programs that we've done toward that. Is the methane gas to electricity plant that we constructed back in two thousand twelve, thirteen. And it's generated a lot of revenue um to offset the burden to the, the, the rate payer. Um, and we expect that, that uh facility to continue into the next couple of decades. Because um cell eight will be decomposing over the next several decades. Cell nine, which we're in the, in the process of expanding now, is gonna be there for a long time. So we, we do expect that the uh methane generation will continue to fuel that plant, providing revenue. Uh, we've done some small-scale solar uh activities on the, on the facility as well. Um, you know, the other thing that we don't really control, but it can have an impact, is the commodity market for recyclables. Um, and that was really good, as you can probably recall, uh, you know, eight, ten years ago. Um, and it slowly um decreased because of the East Asia. Was becoming less reliant on Western markets for raw material. But we are starting to see a resurgence in the, in the commodity price value of, of cardboard. So, and, and, you know, to the extent that other uh, you know, organics and things like that. Um, yeah, the other thing that we did is, is again, just like in um, when I talked about utilities. It's, it's a blend of uh cost, of revenue generators and cost savings. In the um, in our composting uh program, we went, when we eliminated the, the, the plastic bags. And then we expanded our um compost pad at Millersville, and then we outsourced it to a third-party provider. Um, we took, we drove our uh processing costs for um taking yard waste and turning it into compost. From seventy dollars, over seventy dollars a ton to twenty dollars, less than twenty dollars a ton. So that, even though it's a, it's a, it's a cost savings, it's efficiency, and those are the kinds of things that have allowed us to spread that rate out over the last nine years. So we look at both, both sides of that coin, revenue and cost savings.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Phipps, you and I have emailed a little bit about this, and I'm, I'm assuming others in the county. And, and on the council have heard from their constituents about this, but curbside collections. And the challenges over the last year of getting curbside collections picked up on time. Um, I've heard a lot about it even recently from constituents. So even though we're not like in the height of the pandemic anymore, we're still seeing, I, I know in particular up on Solly Road, some of the communities up there in Marley Neck Boulevard. I'm hearing from constituents that their trash recycle, yard clippings, you know, all those things are not being picked up on the scheduled day. Is that a product of the contractors that we're using? To the extent that the contractors that we're using fail to pick up on the day they're supposed to, are we assessing liquidated damages? What's the recourse that we have in terms of the failure of the contractors to perform within contract?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Yes, um, we do believe COVID has had a, a sig, significant impact on those resources. And um, you know, as I mentioned earlier, twen, we, we do twenty-five million collections a, a year. Um, so at any given day, we're doing four hundred and eighty, or any given week, it's four hundred and eighty thousand collections. Um, while any delay is unfortunate. I, I don't think that the delay is a large percentage of that four hundred and eighty thousand collections. And, and we would also, we're, we're proud that some of our, our neighboring jurisdictions have curtailed their program. They have suspended, and you know, I, I guess I don't wanna say names, but they suspended the recycling program. Um, curbside pickup for recycling. They, others have cur, uh, curtailed their uh yard waste uh collection. We didn't do that. But what we're seeing are missed, or not missed, but delayed. So that they may have to come back the next day and pick it up, and we've been messaging that to the, to our customers. That, you know, leave it out there, we will get it, we will get it, may not be on your scheduled day, you're gonna get it the next day, we'll, we'll pick it up the next day. And we triage it so that we're getting the most important material first. So trash is first, second priority is the recyclable, and third priority is yard waste. So if the yard waste is picked up on the next day, it's not a public health issue, um it's a disruption, it's a, it's a nuisance, it's an inconvenience. But I, I think they're limited, and, and for purposes, I guess for context, we have, our contracts have liquidated damage clauses. And we've assessed over a quarter million dollars of liquidated damages this year. Pre-COVID FY twenty, um, we had assessed twenty thousand dollars. Um, you know, one tenth, less than a tenth of what we've assessed. So we're using all the contractual mechanisms we have at our disposal to um enforce the, the performance of the contracts. And we'll take it as far as we have to, um, to, to get the contractors to deliver. Um, so, and um, so we're working, we're working very hard at that. We, we do acknowledge it. And you know, yes, the best solution is, let's get out of COVID and, and, you know, because I have a hundred and six trucks a day on the road. Um, if one of the crew is sick, it could be quarantining the entire crew, so I've lost a truck. So um, you know, one percent of the crews that get maybe a positive case. Could affect ten percent of the, the, the resource that we have available.
Ms. Feedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Feeder, District Five. A follow-up uh um to Mr. Volkey's question. We've been getting some emails about um the yard waste bags, the reusable plastic ones. I know that the policy was changed in two thousand seventeen, but it seems some of our um contracted waste management agencies. Have just started to notify um residents that they are no longer taking them. That is part of the internal policy for efficiency and cost savings, or are there more reasons you can give on the record for that change?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. A lot of it is cost savings, and the reason it's cost savings is there's no outlets that will accept. Um, the, 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 the plastic bags because of the nuisance they create. So that was one of the reasons we, we had, we went there, because our vendor at the time was no longer accepting um plastic bags. And um, and Rhodey, you may wanna, you may have more to offer from this perspective. But it is um, it's an outlet-driven, driven um issue that, you know. Nobody's accept, accepting the uh plastic bags as they did before.
Yes, this is Rhodey Holdhouse, um DPW. It's, it's really a consequence of um the handling, but also the resultant compost. Um, or problems with compost that has shards of plastic in it and things like that uh for the consumer and, and the, the end-use for the compost.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Amanda Feeder, District Five. Is that, is the same true for the reusable yard waste? You know, the ones that are like the thicker tarp plastic that can just be dumped and then left on the curbside for the homeowner?
Uh, yeah, I think what, what I was addressing was plastic bags, um like a GLAD trash bag full of yard waste.
Okay, I'll follow up in this, in a, in an email with specific constituents' concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Uh, just again, on this same line of questioning about um curbside collections. So I do have a question kind of generally, it's, it's specific to a certain degree, but it's also general. Um, are there any provisions in contracts that we have with providers of curbside collection? That they have to follow all laws, or that they have to be in compliance with like environmental rules or anything like that? I'm only asking because there's been a relatively high-profile situation where MDE is, I think filed suit against uh someone that we contract with. For collection of curbside material, and I'm just not sure how that is going to impact us. And whether that's going to create problems with the rate model going forward, if there have to be any new bids or anything like that. So I just wanna try to understand how that impacts and what the county is doing.
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. So we've had discussions with the law office on that. And really, um, you know, and I don't wanna speak for them, if you, you know, legally, I, I think they have, they're the authority on this. But that MDE has enforcement powers over how a yard is maintained, their, their contractor yard. They have to have what's called a um, you know, the NPDS permit, it's an industrial permit. And that's all under MDE's enforcement, um and, and we would have to rely on them to enforce that. Now, to the broader question of, yeah, for, if we were to lose a contractor, um it would be extremely disruptive. Um, we have to pull together, I mean, pull in resources that don't currently exist, or steal from Peter to pay Paul to get it done. Um, and you know, with that comes increased pricing if you're doing things under emergencies. So um, uh, uh, there are, there are concerns with that, and, and that's something, you know, we're, we're just. We're, we're continuing to enforce the contracts as we have them today. And we're working, will be working with, and have been with purchasing agent and law. As to what the next remedies, if, if they are needed, um contractually, what we can do.
Anyone else? It looks like we can keep going, Mr. Phipps.
Okay, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. Next slide, we go to uh finally the watershed program. Watershed Fund. And we are requesting an additional one point. And we are requesting, uh, an additional one point nine million, uh, from, from over, every year. Uh, that's combination of the personal services package, but really it's debt service, as you see right there, of that one point nine, one point eight seven seven is debt service. Um, that's due to just the increase and continuing increase in capital project, uh, delivery. And, um, the bonds that are now being, uh, paid through debt service. And the next slide. Please. Um, just shows, it, it's not a graphical representation, but more of a tabular representation of, of our fund. Um, and so it's showing that in FY twenty-two, we're, um, there's no rate increase, uh, being proposed. But the model shows that in FY twenty-three, uh, at, at a five percent and then, and then out. We would be projecting the possibility of a rate increase, and, and what's driving that again is debt service. Um, you can see in the, under the operating expenditure tab, um, there, um, it, it is going to continue to increase. And, and at that rate, even with the five percent increases come FY twenty-five. Um, we begin to find ourselves in a, um, structural deficit where we're funding, where expenditures are exceeding revenues. So we're going to be, um, you know, depleting the fund balance, um, as of FY twenty-five, even with these projected rate modeled rate increases. So, uh, and that concludes, um, our presentation. Yeah, there's the family. Um, so if you have any questions.
I have a question, where do we, where can we buy a little family for our children to play with? Does anyone have a question on watershed, um, protection, restoration, or any of the other elements of the presentation? Mr. Phipps, are you, are we still going through then further drill down into the individual?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, we're, my presentation's complete.
Okay. Ms. Hare?
With this, sorry, Jessica Hare, District Seven, um, would this be time to ask any questions about capital budget as well? Or are we dealing with that separately?
Mr. Phipps?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, that, that, that'll be done on Tuesday, capital program.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question, um, Mr. Phipps, on the out-years where we're showing, for example, on that. I think the last slide or the slide before, on the, um, watershed section. Where he showed that we would be negative by FY thirty, for example. Can you give a bit more context to explain the degree of seriousness of, of that? I know these are, um, a lot of these, at least, are enterprise funds. And so I know it means changing rates and setting rates, we talked a little bit earlier about how we could possibly take smaller steps. Um, for a series of years to be able to, uh, make the shock, you know, lessen the shock on people's, uh, pocketbooks in a given year. But, um. I think I, what I'm wondering is just, can you explain how it is that there, that there aren't other options? Are there reforms that we could make, or are we already sort of doing everything perfectly? And this is just the natural consequence that's going to happen?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, what's really driving that is debt service. Um, it's not that we're adding new staff, it's not that, um, you know, CPI, yes, that's going to have an impact because commodity prices go up. So you've got CPI and really significantly the more, the, the bigger project load that we're putting in the ground. And that's all driven around our, our MS four permit. We have to do, like I said, we, we're coming off of, you know, restoring a thousand acres a year of impervious area. And, um, we do seek efficiencies, um, to, it's, it's less revenue generation, but cost efficiencies. Again, curtail the need to, 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 to do these increases. So if you think about cost of impervious area reduction is fifty to a hundred thousand dollars an acre. Is what it, is what it costs to put those projects in the ground. We're coming in below fifty thousand dollars an acre, and a lot of that's because of the techniques that we use, the designs that we advance. Where we can deliver, um, much more efficiently. The other thing that drives that is two projects in specific, and this will come up on Tuesday. But the, um, public-private, uh, performance contracting, which is a mechanism where we put five million dollars. Um, offered up, seeking proposals from private interests. And they will advance proposals, and when we see what, what, they bring some cash to the table. Because they may be getting some benefit out of it, being a shoreline restoration, or one of them was septic to sewer conversion that one of the, um. So they got the benefit of a sewer, sewered, um, commercial business. And so that leveraging brings the, those costs down if we just isolate our contribution. It's below twenty thousand dollars an acre, sometimes fifteen thousand dollars an acre. So we continue to do that, um, extend those programs to leverage outside revenues. To lower the cost on the county taxpayer or ratepayer. Um, but by and large, the expenditure levels are going up because of that capital. Uh, it's a capital-intensive program, most of the, and, and you'll just see that climb as we go into the future. And we, we really can't, we can't adjust that. All we can do is do, continue to do more efficient project delivery, so we save costs, um, on delivering those projects. But the MS four permit that we're required to meet is what's driving those impervious acres reduced that we're held to. Or it's actually written into our permit.
Thank you. Ms. Hare, you had your flag up, did you put it down?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven, I, I think Mr. Phipps may have answered my question, and I'm, I may ask this poorly. But following up on, um, Chairwoman Lacy's question, uh, what I'm trying to figure out is when you say our permit locks us in to, to do this. You know, remove this many acres of impervious surface, is it, um, that we have an obligation to meet certain, um, thresholds? And we are choosing to do it by removing impervious surface? And maybe there is a different, more efficient, um, cost-effective way that we might also be able to meet some of these goals. In conjunction with removing that impervious surface, or is it very specific that we have to do, and there is no other way that we can meet it?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, so, yeah, I, I, I guess I'm so in the business and I use these terms. Um, you know, impervious area reduction, that is, it, it actually, in our permit, will say you need to do so many acres of impervious. You know, a thousand acres impervious area, or five thousand over a five-year period. Um, then M D E says it's up to you, you know, you, you figure out how you're going to do it. But well, it's not really, we're not out there tearing up impervious area. What we're doing is providing stormwater management that treats the existing impervious area that we have. That was built in an untreated way, so, you know, we're retrofitting the environment, basically, uh, the sins of the past. You know, so when development occurred in the forties, fifties, sixties, and even into the seventies, stormwater management wasn't what it is today. Impervious acre, acreage has no treatment, so we're going in and treating it to, um, to meet. So it's a tr- there's a translator that M D E uses for so many linear feet of stream restoration. Equals so many impervious areas treated. A storm, a stormwater pond, same way, with a certain volume, you can translate it into impervious acres removed.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, just on the same line of questioning, so, Mr. Phipps. I don't have it readily at my fingertips, but how much is it that we're spending this year on stormwater restoration projects? Like, what's the debt that we're taking out this year?
No, I'm Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, I'd have to, that'll be part of the capital, um, program. Uh, but you, you can, if we go back to that slide, it'll show what our debt service, um. The debts, if, if you can pull that slide back up.
I, I'll just, I'll ask it more directly.
I think it was like ten million dollars, it was like ten point something million in debt service payments.
So to the extent that we have PEGO this year, and we have money that we could use. If we were to use cash, basically PEGO money, to pay for some of these projects as opposed to applying PEGO to other places in the budget. Would it help to make this more sustainable?
That, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, I'd have to defer to the Budget Office because they're juggling so many competing priorities. And, um, that's a question for them.
Okay.
I'm, I'm happy to answer that, Sam Triaka, Budget Office. So we would still have to take the cash out of the watershed fund. So it, it would be just re, you know, reusing it for cash instead of for debt service. Because we can't appropriate general fund PEGO to the watershed projects, it still has to come from the watershed fund. So it's the same, you're pulling from the same pot of money, I guess is the best way for me to say that. Does that answer your question?
For, for now, yes, thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven, um, following up on this issue a little bit more. So obviously, Mr. Phipps, you and I worked on the septic issue, uh, together with a whole host of number of other people, and, and I appreciate all that work. And that is, in my understanding, one mechanism for more efficiently, uh, meeting some of the requirements of, of the MS four permit that we have. Are we currently exploring other options like that? Um, or, or pulling together any other task forces that might be able to come up with alternative solutions like that? So that we are not running into this sort of perpetually unsustainable path?
Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works, so that starts to get into the state's, uh, TMDL, um, so the Bay Pollution Diet. Um, the Stormwater Program is very specifically focused on impervious area reduction. Um, expanding, th- there's a bigger issue that the state confronts, and that's the TMDL, the Bay Pollution Diet. And they are, they look to the counties to come up with, um, concepts, plans, that's the watershed implementation plans. To, uh, d- basically meet our TMDL obligation twenty twenty-five and beyond. So yes, we're looking at, um, you know, the septic to sewer, we're looking at minor systems, uh, you know, the conversion of some of the. Um, specifically, some of the wastewater treatment plants in the Wasens Corner area, um, which are not even, they're not even B N R. Which is biological neutral removal, they're, you know, they're running maybe eighteen milligrams per liter discharge nitrogen. Our E N R facilities are designed for three, but we're meeting below two. So if we could get them down, yeah, that, that's another concept that is something that we are taking a look at, doing feasibility. And I've met with, um, you know, the Texas Riverkeeper and keeping him engaged in that process, um, in that exploration. We're also looking at managed aquifer recharge, um, that, that's a concept that's, um, in full, full bore, then, not, not demonstration. But full imple- implementation in Hampton Roads, um, Sanitary District. Where they're, um, they take their high-quality effluent, run it through an advanced water treatment plant, and then recharge the aquifers. Because they're, they pull from the same aquifer we do, um, it's called Potomac Aquifer. And, um, we're the biggest, uh, all of our, the water we produce comes from our, uh, our local aquifers. Um, the Potomac Series, and, um, if, if we could do something like that. It reduces the surface dish, surface water discharge of, of, um, that effluent. And we're actually creating, um, you know, advanced water treatment, uh, qua- quality product. That could be, uh, replenishing the withdrawals that we're currently making on our, on our aquifer. So we're seeing drawdown at, in our aquifer levels, this could replenish and reverse that trend, if done in a whole, at, at a large scale.
Thank you, you read my mind, the managed aquifer recharge was exactly what I was thinking, I had reached out to you last week via email, so I, I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll touch base with more, you more offline, thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Michelson?
Thanks, Eric Michelson, DPW, I just wanted to sort of weigh into, um, the council saw the, uh, financial assurance plan earlier in the year. And, and really, uh, I wanted to express that what we do is we have a portfolio essentially of efforts that we're using to meet these goals. So there is some, um, septic to sewer conversion, septic upgrades, um, a whole variety of street sweeping. This conventional stormwater restoration, the full delivery efforts, nonprofit projects that Chris mentions. And so we're always looking for ways to drive down prices, and in that respect, I think the rate model, especially when you're looking out a decade. Is kind of a worst-case scenario, um, in terms of costs, we're always looking to drive down, um, the expense for these efforts. And, you know, to the extent that we do, do, do so, that just rolls back into our fund balance, uh, to help drive down costs in the future. So we, we do have that at the forefront of our mind, and we're always looking for, uh, innovative procurement. And, uh, restoration application methods within the guidance manual that M D E has provided us to help drive down costs to keep rates, uh, as low as possible.
Thank you, does anyone else have any comments or questions about operating budget? Not seeing any. Okay, well, we all know how to contact you, and thank you to the entire panel for coming today and giving us an excellent presentation. Thank you for all the work that you do, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
We'll see you on Tuesday, right? Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Councilman Bruski.
Hare, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, the County Council is adjourned until six PM on Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one. For the virtual public hearing on the FY twenty-two budget, please continue to check the county website for important information and updates. Have a great day, everybody, take care.